Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. It is the twentieth of October 2006, and we are here as we are each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in John Forrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall here on the third floor. We invite members of the public to come here and to watch our council meetings and to participate through public comment. You can come and speak on items of general public comment or specific agenda items that have been put on there for public comment. And you can always catch our agendas here in person in the back with our great program of council ambassadors or online at the city clerk's website at la-city.org. We also invite people to give public testimony in Van Nuys City Hall if that's closer to where you live, and we can see you remotely here in council chambers. And the first Friday of the month, we move the council meeting to Van Nuys where we are able to have meetings closer to San Fernando Valley. And later this year, or next year, we will be meeting in San Pedro and the Harbor area three times as well to bring the city council closer to Angelinos where they live. We are broadcast live each meeting on Channel 35 through the city's cable system, and we rebroadcast on Channel 35 in the evening. If you're not near TV but close to a computer, you can always log on at la-city.org and watch live streaming video webcasts of our council meetings. And also, there's a wealth of information at the city's homepage on elected officials and city services to improve your life. Also, you can lastly call in on council phone, which is a service you can listen to the audio of our council meetings as well as any of our committee meetings. That number is (213) 621-CITY. I want to thank council members Labonge, Perry, and Wesson for being here. Each Friday, we make special presentations to notable Angelinos and some of the groups and organizations that are working hard in Los Angeles to improve the quality of life. So with that, I'd like to recognize for our first presentation, our Assistant President Pro Tem and Councilwoman from the Ninth District, please welcome Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Council President. And I'd like to invite Mr. Conrad Larry Watson and friends to join me here at the podium. As he comes up, I will tell you that he recently elected to retire from the Salvation Army after more than 22 years of selfless service to the poorest people of Los Angeles. He has worked for the Salvation Army since 1984 in various social service capacities, including Director of Adult Rehabilitation Services and Executive Director of the Harbor Light Center in downtown Los Angeles, making a positive impact on untold thousands of lives. Mr. Watson served as the Executive Director of the Harbor Light Center from 2000 to 2006, implementing a successful workfare program for persons recovering from addiction, setting a positive example of the power of a dedicated and productive lifestyle consistently over the years. He has served in the downtown area in collaboration with other social service providers in order to transition those who suffer from homelessness out of Skid Row and into mainstream society. And he has worked closely with local government officials for local improvements and initiatives. Throughout his career, he has demonstrated the desire to create a diverse work environment by encouraging professional development of minorities and females, and particularly evidenced by his leadership role in the California Association of Addiction and Recovery and his past membership on the Board of Directors of the California Institute of Health and Social Services. Mr. Watson has the respect and admiration from his peers in the social service community, including his current position on the Los Angeles Central Providers Collaborative because of his energy and his passion to improve the quality of life for the people of Los Angeles and his commitment to promote a productive lifestyle of work and accomplishment and his ability to get things done. Additionally, he served his country as an aircraft electrician in the United States Air Force with an honorable discharge, and he has provided service in Central City East in the Ninth District, having helped improve so many lives. So I wanted to take this opportunity to wish him well, extend my sincere appreciation and thank you for his more than 22 years of service to the community as a loyal and committed person, and to wish him great success in his endeavors. He has big shoes to fill.
Well, I tell you, I've come a long way. A little over 23 years ago, I was in such bad shape you would not have recognized me. I certainly didn't have any aspirations of being awarded in the city council, having productive life, but because of the Salvation Army and in my willingness to turn my life around, what I exemplifies is that people can turn their lives around. And I personally want to thank Jan Perry for not only helping Salvation Army and the Salvation Army programs, but especially two of your staff people, Kathy Guthrie and Mike Hernandez, for the support that we've gotten over the years, but more importantly, for the dedication that you've dedicated to the Ninth District and the community that is now getting attention that for so long has not. And so I accept this humbly and am pleased to get it. Maybe I can finally retire now. Thank you.
I don't think so.
Mr. Watson, Mr. Labonge would like to add his good wishes as well. I'd like to recognize Tom Labonge.
Thank you very much, and I just want to say 22 years Salvation Army is very special, but also every time the Salvation Army is here or wherever I see them, I want to thank them because the Salvation Army stood tall at one of the darkest moments for Los Angeles on January 17, 1994, when the Northridge earthquake came. The Salvation Army was in every park throughout the city and in the San Fernando Valley, helping bring the city back to a calming point and helping the people of this city. So I just want to salute the Salvation Army. Thank you for all you do all the time. Congratulations on this much acclaimed resolution from Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Labonge.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and we'll join in the back and take a nice group photo. All right? Thank you. Can we give him a big hand, please, for 22 years? I think he deserves that. Now, if Mr. Gilbert Galindo would join me here. Mr. Galindo is a city employee and a local hero. Got a pause, huh? Okay. I wanted to recognize this gentleman because sometimes city employees give new meaning to the term "public service." And this is the case of our very own colleague here, city employee Gilbert Galindo. Sunday, July 16, 2006, Operator Gilbert Galindo was on his way to repair a damaged catch basin when at San Pedro Street near 22nd, he discovered a struggle going on in an alley. He stopped his pickup truck, got out and discovered a man in his mid-30s, about 5'7", 140 pounds, fighting for control of a purse from what appeared to be a woman well over her 70s. He ran to his pickup and drove around the block to intercept the fleeing suspect. When he caught up with the purse thief, a fight ensued, and upon subduing the suspect, he held him for the police. He waited for about 20 minutes. He listened to the purse snatcher begging to be let go, claiming that he only lived down the block. Well, Mr. Galindo held his resolve to keep this individual in custody until the officer arrived, and he did. Officer Salas of LAPD's Division, I believe was, I guess, north or central. I'll have to check. Anyway, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Galindo for going way, way beyond the call of duty to assist someone who was so clearly in need, and I wanted to recognize him today and to say thank you. Thank you for being devoted to protecting and upholding the interests of the community and putting that first and foremost. Thank you very much.
Well, I brought a few people here to me today. First and foremost, my wife Veronica, my daughter Tiffany. I didn't want to take my son Michael out of school, so he's in school. My mom and dad, Mr. Gil Galindo and S.B. Galindo, fellow coworkers as well. Clint, Mike, Ed, they were also there. They came a few minutes later to kind of calm everything down. Fellow supervisors, Pat Singleton, Rudy Aguilar, Superintendent Dave Ronge, Rick Roymans, Director Bill Robinson, Ron Olive, Rosario. Thank you guys for coming. Appreciate that. It means a lot.
Want to say a few words?
Just when I did this, it was just instinct. I wasn't looking to receive anything, but it feels nice to be recognized, and thank you for everybody for showing up for me.
You deserve it.
Thank you.
I want to go in the back and take a nice picture.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry. We have next, Mr. Labonge, are you ready? Not quite. Okay. I want to thank council members Labonge, Parks, Perry, and Wesson for being here. We have five members present, and Mr. Smith, too. Sorry, we didn't have you logged in. Mr. Smith is here as well, Madam Clerk. If you'll log Mr. Smith in, please. That gives us six members. We are waiting. I'd like to make a quorum call before we make our next presentation and just ask Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Hahn to join us. Want to ask Mr. Padilla to make his way down as soon as possible, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Weiss. We have presentations on deck from four other council offices, and we will begin the next one shortly. Next, I'd like to recognize for a very special presentation from the 10th Council District, our council member Herb Wesson, who will be honoring a familiar face I know to all of us. Mr. Wesson.
Chief? Look, come on. I want to thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. I want to say to those who are watching us on television and for those that are here in the council chambers today that we are, we have rare opportunities to be in the presence of greatness. So for all of you that are here today, this is one of those moments as we honor not only a phenomenal athlete but a phenomenal human being. Now, it would be one thing for me to just sit up and talk about his statistics, and basically, we're here to honor Don Newcombe because this is the 50th anniversary of when he won the Cy Young Award and the MVP in the same year. And it would, yeah, that is worth a plug. In fact, he's the only individual to be Rookie of the Year when the MVP and the Cy Young, I think the only ball player. And it would be easy to talk about the, all of the games that he won and that he, you know, like today, with the pitchers today, and I'm a big baseball fan. If you can get a pitcher today that can win you 15 games and go six innings, then you really have something. But this man, the year that he won the MVP, won 27 games, completed 18. And I could talk about these things, but where it relates to me, that's not what's important about Don Newcombe. What's important is that because of racism in this country, hundreds of athletes from the Negro leagues, their accomplishments were hidden from us. This individual had an opportunity to realize his dream, and because of that, this country's a better place, baseball is a better place. I can remember my grandfather and my dad and my uncles literally watching the radio, watching the radio. Anytime that he was pitching and Jackie was playing, you see, folks, for us, they were our ambassadors. They were African-American ambassadors to the world. And because of people like him, it makes it easier for the players today, and it makes it easier for people like me, Jan Perry, and Mr. Parks. But I just want to share a couple of quick things, and then I'll ask Mr. Parks to say something. What many of you colleagues don't know is that Mr. Newcombe is a motivational speaker. And once, when your former colleague and my former boss was in a runoff, a fight for his life, Nate Holden, he told me, "We're not going to do any campaign work. We're going to bring in a guest speaker, get all of the volunteers and all of the staff." And all of a sudden, the door opened, and here was Don Newcombe in a jogging suit on a bicycle, and he inspired everybody in that campaign office, and Nate won. But the thing that I remember most about what he said, he said, "When Election Day comes, at 8:00 p.m., if you have made every phone call, if you have knocked on every door, at 8 o'clock, if you know that you did everything that you had to do to win, and if you unfortunately lose, you can find solace in the fact that you did your all. But if at 8 o'clock you have doubts that you did everything and you lose, you will regret it for the rest of your life." From that moment on, I have never, ever taken anything for granted. And on a humorous note, I had the honor to throw out the first pitch at the Ladera Little League when we refurbished the field. Mr. Newcombe was there. I did my wind-up, and I bounced a darn ball. So I am humiliated myself in front of a great one. And the last time I saw him, I was impersonating a golfer at Los Amigos Golf Course, and he was there, and he introduced me to Maury Wills. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a hand to not only a great baseball player, not only a great friend to us, but a great gentleman, Don Newcombe. Show him the respect he deserves. With that, I'd like to, no, keep on going, yeah. And you know what's so wonderful about the Dodger organization? I mean, once a Dodger, always a Dodger. He is still affiliated with the Dodgers to this day. With that said, I'd like to ask my colleague from the great Ninth District to say a few words. Ms. Perry, followed by Chief Parks from the great Eighth.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Wesson. It's just such a pleasure to see Don this morning. The Dodger family is such a tremendous organization. Even when a Dodger retires, he's still out there, I was going to say still out there pitching, but still out there reaching out to the community and touching people's lives and motivating and inspiring people. And just looking at Don today reminded me of the senior fair we had last week. We had Sweet Lou and Tommy Davis come by. To look at these gentlemen and to see that they've lived a lifetime of commitment to physical fitness and healthy eating enables them to enjoy their senior years more fully. So not only is your record in sports tremendous, but I think you also stand as a role model to those who are watching, to those who admire you, the quality of the life that you continue to live. And it's just a pleasure to be able to stand up here today and to recognize you. Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, for bringing Don in. And I had an opportunity recently to go tour Vero Beach, which was a lifelong dream. And the person that was giving us the tour was Maury Wills. And to go through Vero Beach where he had the opportunity to point out in years past, this was the black section, or this is where black ball players couldn't play, or these were the bleachers. And to understand clearly what it meant when Don Newcombe and Jackie Robinson and Roy Campanella broke those color lines and what they were experiencing when they were out on the field and 50,000 people were hoping that they didn't, they weren't successful or calling them names, you really begin to get a sense of what they experienced. The three people that I've had in personal conversations with that probably the most gluing kind of discussion was Maury Wills, Lou Johnson, and Don Newcombe. When they talk about their careers, they just don't talk about the athletic things that we see. They talk about the tragedies and the human failings a part of it that created that career. And each one of them, when they speak, you get a sense that they not only enjoyed the high spots, but they clearly, in exposing the low points and bringing people along, realize the sharing of their lives is important to everyone. And I'm just pleased that Don is here. He looks like he could still go and get 27 wins, but he has been a, and he said the Dodgers need that, too. But he's been a guy that has been a mainstay in this community. From the day he got here, he's been at community events, and he has just been a charm to have an association with. And I'm so pleased to hear this applause that he receives today because he certainly is deserving of that kind of commendation.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. And I also want to inform all of the members, if you look on your seats, you'll see that Don, who's joined by an old friend of this building, Howard Sunken, brought us L.A. Dodger hats. And another bit of trivia, I've got the answer to the question that everybody wanted to know. Mr. Newcombe went to high school with Nate Holden. So I now know how old Nate really is. So if you want to know, just ask me. I won't say it publicly, but now I know how, I know he's not 74, okay? Anyway, it is my, my pleasure.
74 again.
Yes, 74 and holding. It's my pleasure to present to you, Mr. Newcombe, a resolution signed by all of the members of the council, the mayor, every elected official in the city of Los Angeles.
And I know Mr. Labonge would like to add his good wishes as well. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, and I know Howard Sunken, their fabulous Vice President of Corporate Affairs. But Don Newcombe, and you're where you're standing, many great people have stood, but you're among the absolute greatest of all athletes who ever stood there or humanitarians. To do what you've done athletically has never been duplicated and will never be duplicated. And I don't know if anybody this year won 20 games in the majors. Did anybody win 20 games? 27 ballgames, 18 complete games. And then, as described by Councilmember Parks, the challenges of athletes at that time due to the wrong thinking of many, that only because of sport, art, music, and dance, we've been able to bridge people and break down it. I just wanted to salute Don Newcombe, and I'm so proud to be able to sign that. Herb, thank you for bringing in one of the greatest of all. Give Don Newcombe another big hand.
With all of these accolades that I've gotten thus far this morning, I should say that I'm at a loss for words, but I'm never at a loss for words. I want you, ladies and gentlemen, to know that. But I shall want to thank these friends of mine and these council persons and all of you for taking your time to allow me to accept this great honor. It was given to me by two great people at Dodger Stadium, Frank and Jamie McCourt. And there were ironically enough, a couple of council persons not available to sign it at that time, so now we had to complete it this morning. I don't know who you were that was missing, but now that we got you all, I want you to know how much I appreciate it. And I wonder if I may take a few minutes to tell you something about history and Jackie Robinson and Roy Campanella and myself. In my memory bank, I have a memory bank here, and it goes way back to 1946. And at that time, we were just winding down the Second World War, and there were some black baseball players who wanted to play baseball in the major leagues, and we thought it was our right to do that as Americans. You see, baseball was known then, and still is known, as a great all-American sports pastime. But at that time, they had a commissioner of baseball, and I will never forget him. They had a commissioner of baseball named Kenneth Shaw Mountain Landis. And he said, and said it publicly, "As long as I'm commissioner of baseball, they will never play in the major leagues of baseball." Now, we thought there was something wrong with that. The newspaper people, the black writers from the Pittsburgh Courier and the Afro-American newspapers, and I remember their names, Wendell Smith and Sam Lacy and some of the others, they started the campaign to change that attitude. And with our men having to go to war and fight and die and then come back, and maybe if they got a job, pay their taxes, they thought there was something wrong with not being able to play Major League Baseball as Americans. And then one day, ladies and gentlemen, something very drastic happened. Kenneth Shaw Mountain Landis died. You can laugh if you want to because we all laughed about that. He died, and a new commissioner came in and opened the door, along with the owner of the Dodgers at that time named Branch Rickey. And we, Jackie Robinson, Roy Campanella, and I got our chance. We became the first with that chance to change the image of baseball and to change this country, not only this country, but we made an impact on what we did on the baseball field all over the world, ladies and gentlemen. I want you to know that. And also, in my memory bank, I'll never allow myself to forget, a great man sitting at my dinner table right over here in Ladera Heights one night in 1968, a month before he died. And he said to me, "Don, you and Jackie and Roy will never know how easy you made it for me to do my job." And at that time, he was being beat over his head with billy clubs and thrown in jail and being bitten by dogs in the south. Imagine that, ladies and gentlemen, this great man saying that to me at my dinner table. His name was Martin Luther King Jr. We made it easy for him to do his job in 1968. How would his job have been in 1946 if he had had the audacity to get out on that baseball field, Jackie and Roy and I did, or do what he did in doing what he did in civil rights? How short his life would have been at that time. He might not have made it to 1968. So I wanted you all to know that here today, to know how honored I am with Herb and Bernard and this beautiful lady here, standing here with me along with Howard Sunken from the Dodgers, to let you know how much I appreciate and how honored I am that you gave this old Dodger, the last one left of that great era. And I want to put Larry Doby's name in there also, the four of us, how much we appreciate And I want to put Larry Doby's name in there also, the four of us, how much we appreciate, and they would have appreciated if they were still here. But I'm here to speak for them, and I want you to know, I want you to know you honor me today, and I will never forget it. This is a great award for me. I've won a few awards in my life, but this is going to go on my wall as one of the great honors that I've had thus far in my life. And I thank you all again for that honor. Thank you. Can we all take a picture with Don Newcombe right here real quick? He's such a special man, huh?
Sure. Why don't we do that? We'll come to the center of the horseshoe right now, and then we'll do that. We'll run through the agenda, and then we'll return to our presentations. I'd like to recognize for our next presentations, two presentations from the council member from the Seventh Council District, our President Emeritus, Mr. Alex Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll give Mr. Newcombe another minute here. Actually, it'd be wonderful if he'd at least stick around for the beginning of this next presentation. Mr. President, colleagues, it gives me a great pleasure to follow the presentation for the great Don Newcombe with the following presentation, which is sort of a split presentation. We have with me this morning a group of incredibly young people who are the Youth for Unity Committee out of Silmar. And I'll read off their names, Josie Dominguez, Danielle Dominguez, Gustavo Cervantes, Giselle Sauceda, Maya Sotelo, and Cynthia Hernandez. There's a lot of talk going on these days in the city of Los Angeles about the state of the Los Angeles Unified School District and the quality of public schools in Los Angeles. And a critical part to that conversation is the quality of the teachers and the commitment of our young people to good education, to getting a good education, and to being active, positive members of their communities. And that's why this presentation is so important to me. Javier Luhan is a teacher in Silmar and was in the classroom a couple of years ago, and he was trying to provoke his students to think and to get involved. And the subject came up, the question came up of what their community was like, what their daily living was like, what challenges and hopes that the young people in Silmar would have. And this provoked a dialogue, provoked a discussion, and out of that discussion came not only concerns about drugs and gangs and violence, access to higher education and whatnot, but the idea to do something about it, the idea to get involved and form a committee that would organize a youth festival in Silmar. And that's exactly what happened. The first annual youth festival was held that brought together various members of the Silmar community with a big focus on young people, bringing to the community information from social service programs, health services, educational resources, and of course, entertainment. What makes this festival special is that it was organized at every step of the way by young people, supported by adults, a little mentoring by adults, a lot of patience by adults. But the leadership clearly here was the young people that helped put it together. And so I wanted to bring them in. First of all, Javier Luhan, for his commitment as a teacher and another shining example of the quality of teachers in the L.A. Unified School District, and present him this certificate of appreciation. Javier? And before I ask him to say a few words, I do want to let everybody know that we do have certificates for all the youth members of the organizing committee, the planning committee. So you were all introduced, wave to the cameras. You'll all be on television tonight if you watch Channel 35. But if I can ask Javier to say a few words?
Hello, hello, good morning. I'd like to first of all thank Maria Ventura, Field Deputy, for all of her hard work with helping out with this festival. Alex Padilla's office, of course, the city of Los Angeles, for all the support that they gave us on the day of the event. Tia Chuchas, which is a local cafe, and L.A. Mission College Youth Advocacy Program. All these different entities were very vital in putting this festival together. And I'd like to also acknowledge the parents that are here and the parents that are not here for all of their patience and support, getting their kids to the meetings that were weekly. And most importantly, I'd like to thank all the students for all the hard work that they did, because it wouldn't have been a youth festival without the youth. So thank you very much.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all of the members of the Youth for Unity Committee and to Javi... Javier Luhan, for just helping us get through everything. And I'm just really happy that it turned out well and everything.
Sometimes being a leader is being asked to speak without any notice. So thank you. Good job, good job. And we'll distribute these certificates in the back. So we're going to come back and take a few pictures. Okay? And you can follow her. There you go. I'll join you here. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you. Mr. President, my second presentation, another group of young people with some excellent mentors. Joining me now are the 2006 Silmar All-Stars softball team, not only champions in the San Fernando Valley, but our city champions to do our Department of Recreation and Parks. Give them a hand. So again, I won't take the time here at the podium, but let me introduce the roster, the starting lineup, in no particular order, for the 2006 Silmar All-Stars. Ariel Amado, Brianna Cruz, Paloma Garcia, Gabriela Hernandez, Alejandra Macias, Melissa Martinez, Jessica Martinez, Kristen Mena, Monique Severa, Michelle Smith, Leslie Villegas, and Melissa Zapata, the Valley Champions and the Citywide Champion softball team. And just as with the Youth Unity Committee, their success wouldn't have been possible without their parents, without their peers, and the support, especially from their coaching team and the team's leadership. So I'm going to ask in a minute for Freddy Solis, the team manager, to say a few words. But I want to introduce Coach Mario Zapata, Coach Chris Ferrer, Team Mother Stella Martinez, and representing the Silmar Recreation Center, our Rec Center Director, Virginia Corbin Marinovich. There you are. Give them a round of applause. So, you know, from time to time, we bring in our citywide football team, our citywide baseball team, our citywide wrestling team champions. But this team in particular is special. The story of the softball program in Silmar is special. In 1999, it was noticed that there wasn't not only a strong softball program in Silmar, but not much of a program at all. And so Team Manager Freddy Solis formed the first girl softball team at the Silmar Recreation Center. His stepdaughter was interested in playing, but there was no program, no system in place. And so they created one. In 2000, they made a big leap. They were able to form two softball teams at the Rec Center, not a huge league by most people's standards. In 2001, there were four teams. Finally, we had a division right at Silmar alone. In 2002, the team performed so well that they won not only the Valley, but the city championship. In a span of three years, they went from not having much of a program, no recruits, no farm system, to becoming the citywide champions. And they've had a stellar record ever since. In 2003, they placed second Valley-wide. In 2004, they again won the Valley and citywide championship. In 2005, they again won the Valley and citywide championship. In 2006, they again won the Valley and citywide championship. They're kind of like the Yankees of softball in the city of L.A. They have all the All-Stars on their team and have become the team to beat. But we salute them today, not only for their success on the field, but for everything that comes with being a champion, learning the value of hard work, learning the value of discipline, learning leadership and dedication to their sport. So we have a certificate for each and every one of the players, each and every one of the coaching staff. And if I can ask Freddy Solis, your team manager, to say a few words.
And that stops working on the field, you know that.
Yeah, no, that's true. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having us here with you today and giving us this honor of being given certificates. It's like Councilman was saying here, we had to put something together in Silmar, and we just have a good coaching staff and a lot of support from all the parents and the community. We also like to thank GPLA, which is Girls Play L.A., for sponsoring us these last couple, three to four years with uniforms and helping keeping the fees down, because, you know, we are all working families out there. And we hope to just keep moving on and do the best that we can and hopefully be back here again next year. So I'd like to thank you once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your time, colleagues. As you can see, the young people of the Northeast Valley are in great hands between the teachers and the coaches and the parents. Thank you very much.
For our next presentation, I'd like to recognize our council member from the Fourth District. And I know that Tommy is watching us on television right now, very excited about our honoree. So not this Tommy, but another Tommy. But we'd like to recognize our Tommy Labange to make the next presentation. And Councilmember Han is going to be joining him as well.
Good morning again, and it's a great Friday, very special 20th day of October. I'd like to ask Chris Low, the Manager of Government Affairs, for Disneyland to join us at this time. Chris is coming through that back door momentarily, just like a magic act that you would see. And if you could open that door and invite Chris Low, the Manager of Government Affairs, with a very special guest. All right. Mickey, good to see you. Come right in between us, right here.
Come on in, Mickey.
You're someone who needs no introduction, but let's give Mickey Mouse a big welcome here. I think it's so special that we had an opportunity, the City Council, to honor Disneyland on their 50th anniversary this year. And Chris Low is here with the Government Affairs operation of Disneyland. I believe, although I was born in 1953 and 55 and from a big family, we did go there, but I know someone who was there on opening day, our very own Janice Han, who was 42 at the time. How you figure the math, Janice? I don't know. But you know, the Disney family, the Disney company, Walt Disney arrived here in Los Angeles in 1926. He came from Kansas. He moved in with his uncle, who lived off of Vermont Avenue in Kingswell in the Los Feliz district, and started his first, first studio. And I think there was a little fella named Steamboat Willie, if that's correct, before Mickey came along. And Mickey was born here in Los Angeles, which is so special to have here. His first official studio was on Hyperion Avenue, where for many years, they had the Hyperion days of that great studio before they went to Burbank, right on the banks of the Los Angeles River next to Griffith Park. And I will tell you the one thing about Walt Disney and his history, he is one of the greatest men who ever lived in the last century in developing Disneyland. He would frequent Griffith Park and the merry-go-round, and he would take his daughters there. And this is told to me by Dan Disney, that he would let them ride, Mickey, and ride and ride and ride, and he would look like this out over the park in Griffith Park and visualize as a great place. And his daughter told me they would pay a little extra to let the girls ride longer, but he had this great vision to create Disneyland, the greatest place on earth, the most happiest place on earth. And over the 50 years now, it spawned 11 different sites throughout the world of Disney World and other Disneyland throughout the world. It welcomes people from all over, from presidents to actors to anyone who's anybody who's ever been there, including the most important thing is families, because there's nothing better than families. And I know it's so special that Disneyland has done such a great job. When they did a study, it was the Rand Corporation, said the future of the universe of Southern California would be in Orange County and Anaheim there, and they located their site there. They were looking at building it out there by the studio adjacent to Griffith Park, but it wasn't big enough as they saw this great vision here. So we're just so pleased to have Disneyland here to recognize them and this great resolution from the City Council, signed by Mayor Bureau Gose as well. And before I ask Chris to speak and recognize Mickey, I want to ask one of the great ones here, our very own Janice Han, who I know for sure, because she told me for sure, that she was there that day in 1955. Please welcome the great Councilwoman of the 50th District, Janice Han.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom Labange, and it's great to be here celebrating a milestone for Disneyland. And it is hard to believe, you can probably guess my age now, that I actually was there as a toddler on opening day with my mom and dad and my brother, and we have pictures to prove it. But Disneyland certainly has been just what Walt Disney envisioned, and that was a place of joy and inspiration to the entire world, and that's really what it has come down to. I spent many of my happiest days at Disneyland. My kids have gone to Disneyland, and my grandkids are now loving going to the happiest place on earth, the Magic Kingdom. I will say, one of the things I love that Disneyland did to celebrate their 50th anniversary was that they repositioned their flagship, the Disney Magic, to the port of Los Angeles. And last summer, we had the Disney Magic leaving San Pedro for the first time all summer long. Every one of the crews, many of you went, I know Wendy Grul and her family went on the cruise ship. the cruise ship. It left every week during last summer. They were booked solid, people were enjoying it. But the best thing was I hear the cruise ship horns blow regularly when they're about to leave the dock and sail out of the main channel. The Disney Magic, instead of blowing a traditional horn, plays the first few notes of "When You Wish Upon a Star." And I could hear that all over San Pedro once a week, and it made me realize what a great inspiration and history and connection that I have with Disney. So thank you, congratulations to Disneyland on this milestone. And Mickey, it's great to have you in the City Council chambers.
Thank you, Janice. I appreciate that remarks. When you talk about "When You Wish Upon a Star," remember when life was simple and there wasn't like 500 TV channels, but just about five, on that Sunday night, Walt Disney would come on and at the last "When You Wish Upon a Star." And also, what is the modern day theme, and really it represents Los Angeles, it's a small world, which is such a great theme that you have here. And I do recall, when I was a child, a very young child, getting lost, Mr. President, in Disneyland. And where do you think I went?
Where did you go, Mr. LeBons?
When I got lost? Where did I end up?
Universal Studios?
Very good. Who said City Hall? You got a free pass to Disneyland, courtesy of Tom LeBons. And at City Hall, that's where I got found. So it's funny how it all works out. Now I'm here.
Mr. LeBons? We also have one other speaker from the council when you're done.
Sure. We'll certainly give that one other speaker a chance in a moment to say that this is the greatest place on earth. I know we love taking our various guests up to the top. And the first question I give them on the top of City Hall, the Tom Bradley Tower, okay, what's 35 miles from right here at this point?
Disneyland.
And when they stutter a little bit, I say the happiest place on earth. Boom, Disneyland, right there. Let's give Disneyland a big hand for remarks. Chris Lowe, right here, Chris.
And just before we hear from them, Ms. Grul would like to say a couple kind of words as well, and then we'll hear from our honorees.
And thank you, and thank you, Tom, for doing this. And as Janice mentioned, we were on one of those first cruises out of San Pedro, which was so exciting with our family and enjoyed it. And many of you know my son, Thomas, who I think is addicted to Disney and Disneyland. But as our schedules go, we get home at night, and many times, my son has maybe just gone to bed, but he hears me walk in the door, and he says, you can hear him say, "Mom, mom." And he says, "Mom, can we talk?" And I said, "Sure, of course, you're a parent, you want to talk to your kid." So I get him out of the crib, and we start talking, and he says, "Mom, can we talk about Disneyland?" So every night, we talk about Disneyland and Mickey. But it is the happiest place on earth. And as someone who has grown up in Southern California and Los Angeles, it is a place where kids see their dreams. And to go there as often as I do now as a parent, you get to see how much fun it is for people. And I think Disneyland has not only been a place for people to go, but Disney and Disneyland have been a great corporate citizen and supporting this community and all of those people. And so I just want to say thank you. We look forward to 50-plus more years here. And even though you're not located in the city of Los Angeles, we feel you're very much a part of our family here. And so I have a special request, if the cameras can show Mickey instead of me, because my son is watching at home, okay, cameras, to Mickey, if you could wave to my son, Thomas, at home. Thank you. You made his day.
That's always a Tommy. Hi, Tommy.
Councilman LeBons and honorable members of the City Council, we are so honored, from a Disneyland standpoint, to receive this beautiful resolution. It has been 50 years that we've been here in the L.A. Southern California area, and we are so excited to continue for the next 50 years to make dreams come true in Southern California and Los Angeles. So on behalf of Mickey and myself, we are honored to receive this resolution.
And I've got this young man who's a colleague from what's your name? Oh, Chad, get right in here, buddy. Look who's there.
Hi, Mickey.
Oh, good job. Look at the camera, look at the camera. Representing all the children. Let's hear it for Disneyland, everybody.
We want to see this hanging in City Hall.
Yes, yeah. Councilman LeBons, we'll make sure we hang this at City Hall.
Good job.
So other members can find their way home.
Good job. Here we go, one more, Mickey, wait up there, we got two shots there.
And next, I'd like to recognize from the Second Council District, our President Protem, Councilwoman Wendy Grul, for our next presentation.
So pleased to be here today. That's a hard act to follow, though. I want to tell you, we all have a lot of constituents in our district who work very hard and attend a lot of meetings and do that. But there are few people who walk the streets, drive the streets, and make sure we have a community that is clean and safe and improve our quality of life. And so I think this is, the person I'm presenting this today, E.J. Oceans, is one of the hardest working, most dedicated residents in the city of Los Angeles. I wanted to take this opportunity to present this in front of my colleagues because you are so dedicated to the city, that she takes time to report violations such as illegal dumping, graffiti, abandoned cars, most of the quality of life issues that we face. She also brings to me, when she finds someone has posted an illegal sign on a telephone pole or city pole, she brings it to my office, so we'll follow up. In addition, she calls building and safety directly. And she is somebody who takes initiative. And she doesn't just take care of Studio City, but she does it for all of the communities, regardless of who the council member is. And so we wanted to, and Marilyn White-Siddell had suggested us doing this, but E.J. has, for the four years I've been in office, has been one of those people I can count on who is taking care of the communities. And we know that it takes more than just the elected officials or their staffs, it takes our communities getting involved and letting us know where those abandoned cars are, knowing where those signs are being put up. And E.J., literally, I think goes out every single day and is one of the hardest working people, and she's an honorary member of my staff. I'd like you to give a great round of applause for E.J. Oceans today.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Awesome. Yes, you do. And I want to acknowledge...
I want to acknowledge Marilyn White-Siddell, who is my partner in all things to do with keeping the city clean, not only our CD, but all CDs. And also Glenna, who helps us, and Judy Chilnick, a past commissioner, the Commission on the Status of Women, an important commission in this city today, as always. And I just want to say, if I have one wish, and Councilmember Grul has been so dedicated to helping us with the beautification issue, broken window theory and all of that, one pole with graffiti can make a difference in the neighborhood. If I have one wish, it is that all the council members get rid of their borders. And remember, it doesn't mean if you're on Clyburn, you're this side of the CD or that side of the CD. And all the council members' offices, I work with many of the deputies, we have this argument a lot. So I ask you, please, to ask your staff to be dedicated, and everyone in the room, if you see graffiti on your way home, on a pole, a news rack, an air conditioning duct, wonderful Operation Cleanse we paid for by our tax dollars, run by Pole Racks, a terrific supervisor, please call 311. Use our wonderful 24/7 line with a Spanish and English-speaking operator. Call in that one news rack on your way home. Call Caltrans on the way down on the 101 and the way home. Use our services and those things that we have, and help make the entire of Los Angeles beautiful, bright as this wonderful room today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Councilmember from the Sixth District, Councilmember Tony
It's my great honor and privilege to introduce to you some of the community members from the Honduran community. Today, we have many people, including Leóncio Velázquez, President of Honduras Unidos in Los Angeles, Gloria Suazo, Director of Cultural Affairs of the same organization, and will be presenting the certificate to the community and handing it to Vivian Panting. But first, what I'd like to do is introduce to you the Catrachos, who are the community of Honduras. And they are here in Los Angeles, and they bring a wealth of wonderful culture to our community. And today, we want to celebrate their culture. And by announcing that October 3rd is a significant day because it marks the birth and the date of Francisco Morazán, the national hero of Honduras, who was born in Tegucigalpa. His status is legendary across Central America, but in particular in his native Honduras, as he led numerous military campaigns in order to ensure his nation's sovereignty during the early 1800s. But for us, it's significant because the unique presence of the Honduran community. Outside of Honduras, there are more Hondureños right here in Los Angeles than any other part of the world, but they do occupy other parts of the United States with large populations in areas of Washington, D.C. and New Orleans as well. Over the years, they have continued to make positive contributions to this city and this country through their culture, culinary customs, and art. Moreover, they continue to take an active role in civic life by actively participating in our educational system and are well locally situated and participate in our political system as well. They continue to make their presence felt throughout the country and throughout the city of Los Angeles. They've established Hula in 1998 as a community advocate during the devastation in Honduras resulting from Hurricane Mitch, during which time it actively worked to secure resources for Honduras. And also, it was a beautiful opportunity to see the welcoming of this community here in Los Angeles and throughout Southern California, as they received much support from many other communities to support their home country. Since that time, Hula has continued to actively advocate not only on behalf of the community of Honduras, but also on behalf of several other communities throughout the city. They're active in the mentoring of their youth and many other youth in local social and economic development projects and are very involved in annual Central American Independence Day parades. Because of this community's ongoing participation and contributions, we are pleased to have joining other cities throughout the United States in declaring and celebrating October 3rd as Honduran American Day, El Dia del Hondureño. And welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. I'd like to also point out a few other things that is unique about Honduras. They are one of the few countries that actually have a north and south coast. The Mayan ruins of Copan are one of the most significant ruins of the Mayan empire. In addition to that, their greatest export are their people. And with that, I'd like to present to you Vivian Panting to say a few words and receive
Good morning to all of you council members. Today, I'm here representing the government and people of Honduras to thank you because with this proclamation, you are recognizing the existence of thousands of immigrants from Honduras here in Los Angeles. I am representing right now those hard workers who want to thank you. They want to thank you because the Central American region is a region that needs to be seen as a region. So thank you very much for recognizing the immigrants, the hard workers in our community. Thank you very much.
Also, I'd like to give Leóncio Velázquez, President of Honduras Unidos in Los Angeles, the opportunity to say a few words.
Good morning to Los Angeles councilmen and staff and all Hondurian. We are here present today. In the name of the Honduran community that reside on the world and this metropolis, we want to thank to Mr. Ed Reyes, Councilman of District Number One, and his staff, Susan Muro and Yor Magallanes, for their support and assistance and to be able to receive this recognition of the El Dia del Hondureño and the city of Los Angeles. Thank to the all councilmen and the other districts where the Honduran community reside. I would like to thank the Los Angeles Council President, Eric Garcetti, and my friend and my brother, Salvador Gómez Gómez, President of COFCA, Central American Festivity Community, and Executive Director of SANA, Sabadura American Network, who helped me to achieve this goal. And Isabel Cárdenas and Mrs. Gloria Suazo, those Hondurian that have reside for more than 35 years in the city of Los Angeles, and the whole Hula, Honduras Unidos de Los Angeles member, who we have been working for the last nine years, that is since 1998. I would like to tell all the Hondurian, we have a company today to receive this proclamation of the El Dia del Hondureño, to ALA, Honduras Unidos de Osnabr, Casa de Hondureño, and Sociedad Católica Hondureña. My friends from El Salvador and Nicaragua, they're here today. Many of the Hondurian, they wake up every morning to go to their job and to make the city of Los Angeles, to move forward and to make the city of Los Angeles the best city in the world. Hondurian live and reside and love the city of Los Angeles, but we don't want to forget where we come from and want to help those we left behind. We also want to leave a legacy for the children, especially those who are U.S.-born. The Hondurian were in the switch-up, waterhouse, hotel, construction, driver, hospital, housewife, and child monitor, office clerk, and some police officer and firefighter, and the media news, too. People that have their own business and all of them reside in the city for more than 20 or 30 years, and they have lived the American dream. As another culture and other nationalities, we want to contribute to the growth and the prosperity of the city of Los Angeles. And a special thanks to Mrs. Vivian Panting, General Counsel of Honduras and Los Angeles, who has highly represented us. Thank to all of you, and many, many thanks. We love Los Angeles, we love Honduras, love live Los Angeles and love live Honduras.
With that, I'll conclude this ceremony and presentation. El Dia del Hondureño, Honduran American Day here in Los Angeles, as it's being celebrated all over this country. And once again, as he mentioned, this wonderful opportunity came to us by way of Councilmember Ed Reyes, who couldn't be here today. And I urged him to please allow me to do the presentation, as it is my honor to fill in for him on this wonderful opportunity for Los Angeles, the Honduran community, and all who reside here in Los Angeles. Felicidades, and thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you very much, Mr. Cárdenas, and congratulations to the entire Honduran community here in Los Angeles on this special day. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Cárdenas Grul, Han, Weezer LeBons, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Wyss Wesson, Zane Garcetti, 12 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Okay, let's run through the agenda, please, or first order of business before that, I'm sorry.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves and Mr. Rosenthal seconds. If there's no objection, that will be unanimously approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Padilla moves and Mr. Parks seconds. And if there's no objection, that will be unanimously approved as well.
First items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held, 1 through 15. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 10 through 15.
Okay. We do have a card on 5 as well. And we have 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. We have cards on those as well, okay?
You have cards on 11?
We do have cards on 11, yes.
Okay, I was going to call that special.
So let's take up the balance. Any specials, colleagues? Any specials, colleagues? 7 through 9. If not, let's open the roll on those three, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Do you want to go back, or do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's run through the special meeting as well. If we can call the roll, please.
Cardinals Grul, Han, Weisar, Labonch, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zane, Garcetti, 12 members present in the quorum, Mr. President. And this meeting has two items on the agenda, and they are also items for which public hearings have not been held, and I believe there is a card on item number 1.
Okay, let's call that special for cards. On the second one, we'll open and close the public hearing. Is anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. We can continue that back into the regular meeting, please. And let's go to public comment at this time, starting with Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. My name's Zuma Dog. I'd like to speak out to everybody on TV 35 City Council. I'm trying to avert a public safety hazard that will affect the city, state, and nation. It involves the EAA, engineers and architects, and they run the city. They have people in all departments of this city. They have not had a strike in 120 years. Mayor Antonio comes into office six months later. They're here filling up the bleachers yelling equal pay, equal work. Well, they did strike for a few days, but there was a judge that put an injunction on it. However, the LA Federation of Labor, there are 350 union representation. They've paved the way for strike sanctions to occur, so we do have a possible resolution. Everyone in City Council knows they can give these to EAA people raises. The mayor knows they can give them the raise, and neither one of you even care or against it. You just don't want a scene be doing it yourself because you know that Joe Sixpack making $10 an hour out there doesn't feel sorry for the pocket protecting engineers and, you know, the geeks. This is revenge of the nerds. Being engineers and architects, very difficult. Now, the mayor can give hotel workers raises, no problem. He'll step in. It's a lot tougher to replace EAA. These are the guys that were studying and getting good grades when Zuma Dog was drinking beer and screwing off, and now it's revenge of the nerd time. Let me tell you what happens. There is a resolution on the desk that the mayor should put through and avert this strike. Here's what happens if EAA goes on strike. Goodbye airports, because they oversee the runway safety, so there won't be any flights coming in and out. The ports of LA, 40% of goods coming into this country, well, goodbye to that. They'll have an entire shutdown. CSI at LAPD, Grissom, he'll be going home, and criminals will be going free because the engineers run those departments. Also, things like accounting, auditing, all departments of the city. And the money's there, don't play games. Give them the raise, don't let this come to a strike, and you know that. All right, they go on strike, y'all gonna look real bad, and you can do this, the money's there, give it to them.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Jaclyn Richardson is our next speaker, and then Mary Ann Guyer will be next. Jaclyn Richardson, please. Welcome to City Council.
Good morning, council members. I'm here today to speak on a public comment under a subdivision that we have in our council district. The subdivision, when it originally came to council for approval on September 2nd, 2003, we came here and we asked that it not be approved. It was going to expire because it did not meet the conditions of the stipulated judgment that were negotiated between this council and the applicant's attorney. Today, we're here to ask our councilperson on tentative track 38056 to order that no permits be issued until the subdivision complies with the track conditions and the stipulated judgment that was entered into between the city and the applicant. The lot sizes are not in compliance with the track. They're allowing side yard horsekeeping in violation of the LAMC. There's a requirement for 2,000 square foot horsekeeping area. The code requires that to be 35 feet from the habitable room on the lot and/or the adjacent property. They're bringing that as close as eight feet to the house. This is a health and safety issue. This is an equestrian subdivision. The conditions call for the 2,000 square foot horsekeeping area and pursuant to the code, that it has to be a minimum of 35 feet away. This is a health and safety issue. It's been an issue that I have a letter from the Advisory Agency almost 17 years ago that states that, that we have showed the council office this morning and the Advisory Agency. What we're really concerned with is what's happening, is this applicant has came in, and even though he's not met the track conditions, and this is a brand-new subdivision, he's came in and--
I can ask you to conclude.
Wrap it up.
And if you have additional information, we'd be happy to get it from you from the Sergeant-at-Arms, so please let us know. But your time is up, so thank you. We'd be happy to look at that if you'd like to give anything to the Sergeant-at-Arms. Yep, Ms. Grul?
Note to Mary Ann, who is here, and we had a moment to speak, and yesterday, my staff were out there with them for three hours going along the site, that we're working very closely with them on this issue and appreciate all that they have done because they have watched it very closely since when it was originally approved in 1990, way before I contemplated that running-- Well, that was some of the original issues, yeah.
Thank you.
But thank you very much, and thanks, Mary Ann, for being here.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Grul. Jaclyn Richardson, and then Linda Greco will be next after that.
The subject is Martin Luther King Junior Hospital and the crime committed there. I'd like to say, first of all, that there's a church, big church, that commits crime, and if a school district knows how to teach children to read and write and they don't do it, that's criminal. There's a police department not too far from here, this city, that commits crime. If a church can commit crime and steal and lie and plot, and a school district and a police department can commit crime, a hospital system can commit crime also. What is this crime? The hospital has many problems that accumulate, and in the end, they end up doing nothing. This is a crime. What is the price for the crime? The price is $200 million a year that is used to pay half of the operating expenses. Who is next in line to get the $200 million? Who are some of the criminals? The criminals could be a janitor that doesn't put toilet paper down in the patient's room at night when they need it. Most of all, it could be a doctor or nurse who somebody encourages to get a part-time job, so when they go to the job the next day, they're not quite the regular selves. It could be a hospital administrator that is very effective, and someone tells them, "You're doing an excellent job. Why don't you get yourself a better-paying job in another city with more benefits?" Or another face of the problem could be immigrants who are excellent and speak three to four different languages, however, their primary language is not English, and they're not certified. I want to point out to you, about six to seven years ago, Mayor Ruorten was a mayor of the city, and East LA Hospital, USC County General Hospital, had a problem with their plant physicality, and he asked them if they would clean up their plant, and they did. So, they went from number 74 in the nation to number 14 in three to six weeks or less, and that's excellent, from 74 to number 14 in three to four weeks. I'd like to point out also that if a person can do a good--
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up, but thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Linda Greco is our next one. I just want to remind the speakers, we have a clock right there to follow along for the two minutes, and thank you very much, and welcome to City Council.
Thank you. My name is Linda Greco with the Lutona Canyon Community Association. This is also in regards to tentative track map 38056, 9320 Ledge Avenue. The horsekeeping issue about the horsekeeping area being 35 square feet, right now, the map is saying that it can be closer than, and even right next to the house, up to five feet. That's how they're determining and how the map says. In their area, in compliance with their stipulated judgment, it says that you can enclose this 2,000 square foot area, which indicates as an enclosure for horsekeeping. An enclosure for horsekeeping is how they're trying to determine it, is that you have to be 35 square feet. What they're trying to say is only one horse can be, the corral for one horse can be 35 square feet. The K overlay of 17.5 lot size allows you four horses, and a 12 by 24 structure is not enough to enclose four horses, and so that's why they set aside that 2,000 square feet for horse. This is also supported, that the 2,000 square feet is supported by the Advisory Agency time and time again, whenever clarification is done. I don't know of any other track that has been allowed to allow that 2,000 square feet within 35 feet of the horsekeeping area. I would like, we would like Ms. Grul to red tag or red flag this site so we can, because right now, they have all their forms ready for pouring. We're asking her not to issue permits until we can, so we can find this and change and look at the modifications and the stipulations and make sure they're in compliance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs? Mr. Sachs here for general public comment. If not, our next speaker is Candido Morris.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Earlier, we heard that Disneyland is the happiest place on earth. Los Angeles should be the happiest place on earth. Mr. President, council members, all week, we've heard about our children dying in the streets, that gangs are out of control. We watched this. Ms. Grul's son was waved to by Mickey, and a young man, a young boy was here, and he waved to Mickey. How are we going to ensure the fact that a young man someday may face something violent? We have to do everything we can to stop the violence in our city, and the only way we're going to do that is to take the tools of crime out of these young kids and put the tools of trades. And we can do it. It's possible. Anything's possible in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President, council members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Thank you very much. I'm going to continue with the top three, and number three is, speaking of violence, Hawaii. That's nature's violence, okay? You can't stop that even with ordinances. Now, go back to LA Times, September 17, "Big Buildings Go Unchecked After the 94 Quake in the Valley," and it says that of the buildings they inspected, 2/3 had damaged welds, and half of the welds were cracked, and the rest had more serious defects. So, we need to get on that. Susan Burst on it, so's Jack Weiss, we need some more people, Tom Labonch. Rocky, the city attorney, I told you how you're making him break his mission statement because he's given you good quality advice. The judge rules that advice is good. He said that term limit thing was illegal, but now you're making Rocky say that he thinks it can stand up in court, so you're making him contradict himself, and that's not on. Venice Beach. I've got a minute to go. We saw four or five of those rich cafe owners come in here. They're the guys you're defending right now, and let me tell you who I brought in here who are against it. My latest one is a Ms. Lynch, who's just given me a permit and said she's on my side. I showed you where it says the merchants say they had a bad summer, they're not making money, so they're not happy. I got the performers who say they can't get the spaces that they wanted. I brought in Abraham, the Muslim. I brought Kwanzaa, the girl on the computer, Bill Rosenthal. You remember her? She said it was a scam. We bought Swami, the incense guy, another incense guy. I brought Tony Be Conscious. I brought in the captain, a vet in a wheelchair who's, he doesn't get an income now because you're taking away all the guys who are supporting him on the beach. I brought in Michael Hunt, and I brought Zuma Dog, Wag's Tail, and Council's Face. So, I think the argument, if you weigh it up, the balance is it's the millionaire cafe owners. What's it to do with them?
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. I have been informed Mr. Sachs is in chambers. Mr. Sachs, if I could come forward.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. How are you today? I'd like to just bring up a point, again, regarding the voting and the fact that last Friday, the council meeting wasn't held because quorum couldn't be met because council members were at ethics committee, ethics training, and my question would be, under what section of the Ethics Code is mandated where a non-vote is considered a vote, where, under the rules, how was that explained to the ethically, to the committee? And also, the fact that when this meeting is televised, that the results are shown, but the fact that the council members are not seated to vote is not shown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. That closes our general public comment.
Wait, you have one second?
I don't have a card. If you'd like to come forward, give us your name. We don't have a card for you, but we'd be happy to hear your public comments. This will be our last speaker, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you again. Well, voters in, was in court yesterday, Bill. Judge don't know what he wants to do. They don't even want me to walk down Venice Beach because I'm a lot like Dr. King. I always get a following. I'm just like Rosa Parks, I don't accept no. I'm just like Malcolm X, you know, I'm just like all of these great avatars that I just said. But you have a real problem, and I think city council do too. I think since 1946, like the guy said, it was hard for us to get into baseball. Now, it's hard for us to get on Venice Beach, because if we speak, we're in trouble. If we say something, we're in trouble. As I brought you with the ordinance, the city attorney didn't even know its own ordinance. I show you the court papers, but they tried to do two different ordinance just to get rid of me. It would seem like that the city council would say something regarding that, since he signed the signature, you know, Bill Rosenthal on this bill and things like that, which really don't make any sense, which really, really don't make any more sense, is that it's $2.5 million, $2.5 million from the African-American community was not in competition with the east side of the boardwalk at all. So, I'm still trying to figure this out. Why wasn't an investigation done? Why wasn't a five-year investigation done to find out what it was going to do and who it was going to hurt, and who was supposed to investigate that? And like I said, we still have it in the courts. It's going to come back. We're going to win, but that's not really winning. Winning is putting people back to work and addressing the community. We don't need dance classes. We don't need, we need jobs, jobs, jobs. Bottom line, we need jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. That closes our general public comment at this time. I've had a request to take out of order, number 15 first, if there's no objection to that, colleagues. Item number 15. And like to also, yeah, Mr. City Attorney, if you'll just read our rules of the quorum for our speakers, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. To further the orderly process of the meeting in a timely manner and thus avoid the possible loss of a quorum, if a member of the public wishes to speak on more than one item, he or she shall limit his or her remarks to a total of six minutes per meeting unless council grants additional time by majority vote. A member of the public may allocate time between items in at least one-minute increments. Members of the public speaking on a particular item shall constrain their remarks to that item or be ruled out of order.
Okay, thank you. We have 10 public speaker cards on this. Mr. Padilla, do you want to take the public comment first? Would you like to say some comments at the outset?
No, let's go to public comment first.
Okay, all right. I'd like to ask Dr. Sanjeev Sriram to come forward, as our first speaker, and I'll be followed by Sal Alvarez.
Hi, my name is Dr. Sriram. I'm one of the Pediatrics residents at UCLA Medical Center with the Mattel Children's Hospital. I've been in Pediatrics there for three years now, and this morning, I got to comment a little bit about my past three weeks as a resident. I've cared for premature babies and the neonatal intensive care unit. A couple of them have been the children of smoking families. I talked about how I've taken care of teenagers who have taken up the habit of smoking, and currently, I'm rotating through the emergency room at Olive Medical Center, and I've cared for families that are dealing with lost health insurance. I bring up all of this because Proposition 86 is a rare opportunity for Californians to participate in helping all of these children with one easy vote of yes. And as a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics, I'm really proud to share that the state chapter has voted yes for this proposition as a means of preventing smoking-related illnesses and death for not only children, but for adults as well, and more importantly, to extend health insurance to every child in the state of California. This is a rare opportunity where doctors get to talk about the miracle cure that really gets to not only take care of ailments, but save the lives of millions. And if there were any doubts or if you needed any more facts, I hope that my time with you was valuable, and I encourage everyone to vote yes on 86. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sal Alvarez? And Sal-- And Sal will be followed by Elise Kelly will be our next speaker after that, please.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Sal Alvarez, and I am representing LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens, which is the oldest Hispanic organization in the United States. We have 700 chapters nationwide and 82 California chapters here in California, all who are in support of Prop 86. I represent the National Health Commission for LULAC, and we are supporting the initiative for three reasons. First, the initiative will provide for approximately 371 million to pay for the remaining number of California children under 300% of the federal level who do not qualify for medical or healthy families. The great majority of these families are Latinos. Secondly, this, this proposition will provide 59 million each year to expand services at community clinics, a direct benefit to taxpayers since the system of clinics provides services to low-income families and those without insurance. And lastly, the initiative will provide 758 million to help hospitals cover the cost of emergency room physicians, nurses, specialists, and other services so that hospital emergency rooms remain open and available to the community. As you know, members of the council, there are approximately 900,000 uninsured persons in California, of which 536,000 are Latinos. The proposed initiative would make it possible to enroll those covered under current law and expand coverage to those children currently ineligible. We urge the council to support this initiative. And let me conclude by saying that November the 7th, it is a matter of life and death. This proposition will save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise Kelly is our next speaker. And after that will be Alisa Rudolph, excuse me, will be next after that.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Breath California, Los Angeles County, a nonprofit dedicated to respiratory health. And in recognition of the significant impacts this will have on deterring young people from beginning to smoke, and also in recognition of the significant effects on improving access to healthcare for children, we just urge you to support this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Alisa Rudolph. And then Joe Hari will be next.
Good morning.
Morning.
As a longtime volunteer for the American Cancer Society, I wanted to be here to talk to you briefly. The facts are that 4,000 California children under 18 will become new daily smokers each month. Research shows that increasing tobacco taxes is the best way to keep children from starting to smoke. Smoking causes approximately 11,000 deaths in Los Angeles County each year. I share a moment, a couple of weeks ago, was working a street fair for the American Cancer Society, and a young man came forward and asked, I wonder if you can help me. He was a tall, he looked healthy. I said, how old are you? And he said, 19 years old. And I said, well, what can we do for you? And he said, well, I can't seem to stop smoking. I said, how long ago did you start? He said, I was 14 years old when I started, and I want to stop, but I can't. He says, I'm going to school, and the kind of work I want to learn requires me to do physical work. And every time I try to do the job, I'm having trouble breathing. So I directed him to the American Cancer Society, their website, their 800 number, and I know that he can be, find some guidance there. The point is that 90% of the smokers start smoking before they're 18. This is a critical issue. I have lost family to cancer, and I'm sure if we took a tally here, there are others here in this room could say the same. I encourage you to show your leadership and your support by yes on 86. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Joe Hari. And after that will be Palonda Brownlow.
My name is Joe Hari, and I'm a community organizer with LA Voice PICO. Our organization works with 20 religious congregations from various faiths throughout Los Angeles and represents over 20,000 families. Our organization spent the weekends in March collecting signatures for the Prop 86 campaign. You may have seen us at your local grocery store. This proposition has been a grassroots effort. We strongly support Prop 86. This proposition will save lives, not only by preventing young teens from starting because of the higher cost, but will provide desperately needed funds for children's health insurance and our city's emergency rooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Palonda Brownlow. After that will be Zuma Dog.
Good morning. My name is Palonda Brownlow. I represent the Community Clinic Association of Los Angeles County. We are a policy and advocacy organization representing 43 community clinics throughout Los Angeles County. The community clinics support Proposition 86 for a number of reasons. First of all, it is the only measure appearing on the November ballot that will save lives. Currently, 42,000 Californians die each year of smoking-related diseases. Here in LA County, that translates into 11,000 deaths that can be attributed to smoking and smoking-related diseases. If passed, this proposition will prevent 66,000 LA County deaths and 300,000 deaths statewide due to smoking among California adults and children. This measure will save the state a tremendous amount of money. If passed, this initiative will save the county $4 billion in healthcare costs. Statewide, it will result in healthcare savings of more than $16 billion. Besides saving the state lives and money, the funds that Proposition 86 produces will help address some of California's most urgent health needs. Funds will go towards health treatment and services, health maintenance and disease prevention, as well as health and disease research. $58 million will go towards community clinics throughout the state to assist us in our mission to provide quality, comprehensive medical care to the millions of California residents who could not otherwise afford healthcare. CCA LAC is proud to partner with the American Cancer Society, the American Lung Association, the American Heart Association, the Children's Partnership, and countless others who are invested in keeping Californians healthy. We hope that you support us today and vote yes on Prop 86.
Thank you. Zuma Dog is next. And after that will be Arnold Sacks. All right, Arnold Sacks is our next speaker then. Mr. Sacks? After that will be Michael Hunt.
Thank you very much. I also think this is a good idea, although I am a little bit concerned about the fact that they're already quoting that they're approximately going to raise $2 billion because the next thing that's going to happen is everybody's going to jump into this $2 billion pot and start budgeting for programs that'll be funded by this $2 billion. And then the reality will hit that half the people will stop smoking, and instead of $2 billion, there'll be like $100,000. And all the programs that'll be, have been committed to be operating based on getting this revenue will go down the drain, and the only people that'll make money will be the people who decided to put these programs together. But I think it's a good idea to tax cigarettes. I also think it's a good idea that they should start taxing some liquor. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hunt is next, and then Matt Dowd.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll be taking one minute on this one right here. Can you, Dion O'Connor, can you do it? Hey, can you guys all stand up? Let's give you guys a hand. Come on, come on, this is you guys' bill. Let's, let's go. If you guys afford it, let's, yeah. I think, I think it's a beautiful thing that you guys come down here and talk about putting tax on cigarettes to help the community. I think that's a good thing. I really hope you guys have a lot of success in you guys endeavors and that you guys are really committed to, to making healthy citizens of the United States and Los Angeles, California. Good luck and yes on it. I'm going to give this a unanimous vote. Everybody, we can go ahead and vote it in right now. There you guys go. It's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you. Thank you. He's right, you know, it's, it's a done deal. It's going to be a unanimous yes. We'll have a lot of talk, but it's done. But I'm in favor too, because I'm a former smoker. I started when I was 12. And then it grabbed me years and years, and I gave it up though because of the, the health problems that it does create. It's very real. And I'm in favor of putting up the price of cigarettes. That's just an incentive to make people stop. They're going to jump up and down and say it's not fair. But honestly, you don't have to really dig too far to find the scientific evidence. So folks, it's a done deal. Let's have the little fancy speeches, then we'll all just leave the buttons, and it'll be a unanimous yes.
That's our last public speaker. I'd like to return to Mr. Padilla, and after that, we'll hear from Ms. Perry. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I think this is an easy one for just about everybody, but I wanted to point out that it's consistent with the leadership that this council has displayed over the years. Back in 2001, the city council introduced a couple of ordinances, a couple of new laws in the city. First was the tobacco retailer permit. At the time, a no-fee permit for all establishments selling tobacco. Second, it would, we introduced a requirement that year to require vendor-assisted sales. All tobacco products are now behind a counter, all with the goal of stopping the illegal sale of tobacco. And while it has its health benefits, and I'll come back to that in a second, it also provides a lot of public safety benefits in terms of unlawful sales, establishments not paying their share of taxes, et cetera. But Proposition 86, which would add a significant excise tax to cigarettes, is important. There's two things that we have found over the years that significantly reduces teen smoking. One is specific tobacco control programs, like our tobacco enforcement program here in the city of Los Angeles that the retailer's permit fee now funds. But second, escalating the cost of cigarettes. When we make it simply unaffordable for teens, we keep them from smoking. Experts have predicted, as some of the speakers mentioned, that if Prop 86 passes, we will save 120,000 lives of current smokers. And you can't put a dollar figure on that. Experts also predict that we can keep 700,000 young people from becoming adult smokers. And you certainly can't put a dollar figure on that. In addition to that, Prop 86 will provide revenue streams for other healthcare services, emergency rooms, education programs, et cetera. So with this resolution, the city council can officially go on record in support of Proposition 86. I know several of us are individually in favor of Prop 86, and I do ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Our next speaker is Ms. Perry. Councilwoman Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was able to stand with Mr. Padilla this morning and all the individuals here today. And I just wanted, I shared a quick story about the importance of this measure. Whenever an additional tax is added on to the cost of cigarettes, I'd been told by a healthcare professional, it causes the tobacco companies to lose a share in the market, to take away a niche in the market that they can no longer cover due to cost factors. I was advised that if this passes, it will cause tobacco companies to be unable to attract people who have, who have not yet started smoking because it has become far too expensive and loses its attractiveness. And I thought that that was a very compelling reason to be, to be supportive of this and to give another measure of protection to young people and teenagers who are contemplating whether or not to take, take up this habit. So I also believe that it is a preventative measure. Anything that causes more difficulty and more expense attached to cigarettes, and in addition to that, brings opportunity for education and outreach is a good thing. So I urge for an eye vote as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. If there are no other council members who wish to be heard, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, I'd like to thank you all very much. We will, if there's no objection, we'll send that forthwith to the mayor. Next, I'd like to take item 11 out of, sorry, number 10 out of order. And we have a number of cards from the public on this as well. I'd like to invite first Farhad Larian, or Larian, and then Jeff Jacobberger will be the second speaker on that. Farhad Larian will be our first.
Good morning, council members. My name is Farhad Larian. I'm the applicant on this application. There seem to be two objections to my project from some members of UNRD. One, some object to the height of the building. However, the building will have a street profile of 31 to 35 feet, consistent with the ICO, and the top floor will have setbacks of 11 feet on the front and the rear, 25 feet on the sides, making that top floor invisible from the street. I asked them, what is the basis for their objection? Some object to the length of the building. However, the ICO does not prohibit a building of this length or any greater length, thus no valid objection can be lodged against my project on this basis. This project has been thoroughly reviewed, planning supports it, Plum Committee supports it, and many neighbors support it. I respectfully ask the council to confirm the recommendation of the Chair of Plum and grant our application. I'd like to allocate the rest of my time, if it's okay with you, to Bruce, Bruce Cape, please.
I'm sorry, we can't see time, but if he likes, if he'd like to fill out a card, we'd be happy to have him. I'm sorry, you can't give your time to somebody else, but he can fill out a card. Jeff Jacobberger is our next speaker, and then Ben Resnick.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Jacobberger. I support the application for hardship exemption. Our neighborhood association has been working with Councilmember Weiss's office in the planning department on permanent Q conditions to replace the Melrose ICO. Mr. Larian's building complies with the draft Q conditions, which will have a public hearing on November 13th. Overall, the draft Q conditions represent a careful compromise between competing interests in our neighborhood, although the proposed four-lot building would be wider than near all exist, nearly all existing buildings in our neighborhood. The Q conditions in this building provide important protections for the small-scale, multifamily buildings in our neighborhood while permitting reasonable growth to meet LA's critical need for more housing. I'd like to thank Councilmember Weiss and his planning deputy, Lisa Trifaleti, and the planning department, especially Kevin Keller and Teresa Batson, for all their hard work on our neighborhood's behalf. Many people in my neighborhood are fearful that the, this project will adversely affect the quality of life in our neighborhood. The uncertainty of change is always a bit frightening, and I share their concerns. Nevertheless, I strongly believe that even if this building is not what I'd want on a personal level, approving this application is the right thing for you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Resnick is our next speaker, and then Richard Loring.
Good morning, Ben Resnick. With Jeff Remanks, Butler, and Marmaro, we represent the project applicant developer. I just want to let you know, this is a highly redesigned project that meets the spirit and intent of the interim control ordinance. And my congratulations go to Lisa Trifaleta for really sticking with it and bringing a lot of people together. Thank you, and we hope you support the Plum Committee report.
Thank you, Richard Loring. And then Barbara Anderson will be next.
Good morning. My name is Richard Loring, and I own property within 500 feet of the project located 839 Croft. I understand the community concerns centering on the preservation of the neighborhood character in our area. However, the opposition to the exemption being requested is misguided. This project was designed by an architect and developer who have accomplished every objective contained within the Q conditions being proposed for our neighborhood by the city planning department. In particular, the developer has set back all building elements above 35 feet. The building elements that do extend above 35 feet are not visible from the street. I repeat, they're not visible from the street. The exemption for the project you're considering not only accomplishes all the objectives of the proposed Q conditions, it fully honors the essential goal of the current ICO, namely to eliminate the possibility of visual elements extending above 35 feet. Please grant this exemption to a very good project by a very conscientious developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Anderson is our next speaker, and after that, Matt Dowd.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Anderson, and I've owned property in the area for over 25 years. And even though I'm against the ICO, I'm hoping we're having a good solution here with the help of Councilman Weiss's office and Lisa Trifaleti, and I do support this project.
Matt Dowd is our next speaker, and after that is Joey Lynch.
Thank you. First of all, I want to give a shout out to the city clerk, Maria Kostrencic, and the city attorney, Dion O'Connor, holding the meeting together in chambers. Thank you. Now, this one I find interesting that, you know, here's a control ordinance, and, and you can, you can give a hardship exemption can give a hardship exemption so that these guys can build 33 residential condos. And yet, talking about hardship, you're making homeless people right here on other ordinances they need. Where's all the hardship exemptions for us? So I find it, you know, a little confusing that developers can build 33 condos with an exemption, but you can't sell incense down on the beach for a dollar. Thanks, Mr. City Attorney.
Joey Lynch is our next speaker, and then Temi Trabach.
Good morning. My name is Joey Lynch. My family owns a single-family home, one building removed from the proposed project. I oppose the hardship exemption application before you, and I request that you also reject such application for the following reasons. Number one, applicant is not the record owner of any of the properties. Applicant did not meet the requirements of a record owner at the time the applicant submitted the application and still does not meet the requirements of a record owner. Therefore, this application may not be acted upon by the LA City Council and must be denied. On October 18th, 2006, Mr. Larian stated that the applicant opened escrow on the properties in March 2006 and has not yet closed escrow. Mr. Larian signed the application as the applicant record owner on September 1st, 2006, at which time, by his own admission, applicant was not a record owner of the properties. Second, applicant has not suffered any hardship. At all times since applicant first became interested in building a four-lot, four-story structure in place of the properties, the properties have been subject to building restrictions. Applicant assumed the risk of loss of the money and time expended on his proposed building due to building restrictions on the properties that would prohibit applicant from building his proposed four-lot, four-story structure. Applicant's assumption of the risk of loss requires rejection of his claim of any hardship. Therefore, this application must be denied by the Los Angeles City Council. Third reason is, the Plum Committee was provided with inaccurate information in connection with its evaluation of the application. There is no community consensus with respect to the proposed Q conditions. The community has not been asked to comment on the proposed Q conditions. Public hearings are scheduled for November. Secondly, the ICO was not adopted for the benefit and protection of only the R1 properties. It was adopted to maintain the character of the community by, at the very least, prohibiting out-of-scale development throughout the neighborhood. This application should also be rejected because there is no evidence that applicant's proposed use is consistent with the state housing element law. Finally...
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Okay, I just want to say I've handed in...
If you'd like to submit that, we'd be happy to look at it. I'd like to give it to Sergeant Arms.
Pardon me?
If you'd like to give anything else that you've written to the Sergeant Arms, you can make sure they're circulated.
I've discussed each of these items in detail with information.
Thank you.
No, I've already handed out the information.
Okay, thank you. Temi Trabach is our next speaker, and then Barbara Droto is next.
Good morning. My name is Temi Trabach. As a member of UNRD, I ask you to grant a hardship agreement for a neighborhood that is being bombarded by new development. Unfortunately, most of our neighbors who would have liked to have been here could not take off work. So you have before you some of the many documents and affidavits that represent their pleas to you not to approve the hardship agreement proposed by Mr. Larian. A vote was taken recently at a neighborhood meeting, and it was close to unanimous that the neighborhood does not want a building that is totally out of line with our neighborhood. Although it will be built across from another out-of-scale project, which was the impetus for UNRD, United Neighbors for Responsible Development, this proposed project will be the largest building to be built in our unique and small neighborhood and will be totally out of scale with the majority of properties. 96% are still single or two-story buildings, and 88.9% are built on a single-family lot. As an active board member of UNRD and a resident of Croft Avenue since 1976, I'm here to represent the wishes of the greater majority of our community and tell you, with all due respect, that they are greatly opposed to a project of this size and scale. I'm here to tell you that the members of UNRD are disappointed by your disconnect with their wishes and dismayed that your implied promise to keep the historic footprint of our neighborhood is not being met. How many longtime tenants have to be displaced before you get the message? Our neighborhood, as we know it, is in peril, as is our way of life. You, the powers that be, can be the innovators and policymakers that finally say enough is enough. We implore you to consider our request and vote with a conscience. I imagine a West Hollywood that is loud, hyper-consumer, glitzy, speedy, and congested, where individuals have contact with each other's machines, parking next to each other through cellphones, BlackBerries, and wireless laptop computers. I do not see any public spaces, rather privatized condos, coffee shops, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, and my time is almost out. This is something that's in your packet. I hope you will listen to that plea about the destruction of our neighbor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Barbara Droto, and then Haskell Solomon is next after that.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Droto. I have lived in my home for over 41 years, raised my family here. My husband put in endless hours of hard work to improve the place. Everybody knows their neighbors. We became a close community and help each other. Now, our neighborhood is becoming a place of large monstrosity buildings, blocking out the sun and sky. The noise is terrible. Speeding cars are zooming by constantly, and it is dangerous to cross the street. Developers that don't live here are swooping down like vultures, greasing palms, and buying up the houses. Enough is enough. Mr. Larian's, the developer's, application is for hardship exemption. Hardship? Whose hardship? I would love if it wouldn't be heard so much. Please, please, councilmembers, listen to our pleas and vote against this travesty and injustice.
Thank you for your testimony. Haskell Solomon is next, and then Ellen Shore will be the next speaker after that.
Good morning. It's almost midday. I'm a resident at the place. We at United Neighbors for Responsible Development have come before the City Council in the past, seeking relief from oversized and out-of-scale new construction. This project before you today is exactly one of these types of projects. This building, if built, would become the largest building in mass and number of units in our neighborhood. The reason we sought the ICO is to prevent a building of this size from dominating our neighborhood skyline. We felt that the City Council understood our problem and believed, as we do, that preserving our neighborhood from being permanently altered was very important and urgent. Councilmembers of Orange, Stein, Groll, and Weiss seem to be familiar and sensitive in our area and the concerns of the neighborhood. Like the mansionization issues, this building attempts to squeeze too much building on too little space. This would be a four-lot-type mammoth structure with a maximum height of 45 feet. Our neighborhood has 88% of the structures built on a single lot, and 89% have a height of 30 feet and under. Mr. Larian has sought relief through a loophole in the law in his attempt to build his big box. In a recent neighborhood introduction, presentation of Gail Goldberg, the new city planner, mentioned this very issue of large buildings over lower neighborhoods. She expressed concern allowing this type of zoning to continue. Let's close the loopholes of non-conforming buildings and use the Plating Department to lead the way in innovation and planning instead of reacting to developers' threats. The other question is of hardship. This developer has a speculator and attempted to rewrite history in this case. To the best of my knowledge, Mr. Larian came into a neighborhood with an existing ICO and quietly purchased four lots, some of which may still be in escrow. He hired an architect, designed plans, built models, all before any discussions with our group, all the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ellen Shore, and then David Zakon.
My name is Ellen Shore. I'm a member of UNRD and a resident of the neighborhood that we're speaking of for almost 25 years. I'm also authorized to speak for my mother, who's a resident and a property owner on Alfred Street, the 700 block of North Alfred Street. We're very concerned about the effect that this large condominium project will have on our quality of life. This is a very massive project built on four lots. It's going to create more parking problems than we already have, more construction noise in a neighborhood that already has several large construction projects going on, a larger population density in an area where there's already heavy traffic, and the displacement of a lot of longtime residents. Thank you very much for listening to what I have to say.
Thank you very much. David, is it Zakon? And then Michael Carney will be next after that.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. I'm a resident of Croft Avenue. My name is David Zakon. I'm here to support the UNRD organization. The developer of this project was good enough to attend a community meeting earlier in the week, at which he said to us essentially, if you don't oppose this motion, we'll build a large out-of-scale building, and it won't offend the street. If you do oppose, it will build a large out-of-scale building, and it will offend the street. There's really nothing we can do about the building, I suppose, so I'm not really here to ask you to, I can't take one side or the other because the developers put us in a really difficult position. What I am here to do is to essentially say, we really hope the city can help us in some way to prevent development of this from continuing. We're a very small neighborhood of ordinary tax-paying, rent-paying people. We're not wealthy, and we simply enjoy living in the city of Los Angeles. Each and every one of the buildings that has replaced a single-family home or a classic 1930s or 1920s, fourplex or eightplex in our neighborhood, has been a condominium that goes for a million dollars or more, or apartments that will rent for $2,500 or more. So essentially, if I could ask you to consider in the future some sort of protections for ordinary tax-paying, rent-paying citizens such as ourselves, who can afford million-dollar homes and can afford $3,000 a month in rent, we would appreciate it because that's what's happening to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Carney is next, and then Zuma Dog.
My name is Michael Carney. I'm a member of the UNRD, and I live in the neighborhood. Obviously, I feel that there'll be a negative impact on the neighborhood for many reasons, but I'm here specifically for two points. Councilman Weiss, this is the exact type of development that he's agreed to help us stop. And secondly, Mr. Larian is obviously intelligent, educated, sophisticated. He came into this well knowing the risks, well knowing that he was going to meet this opposition and possibly might not be able to do the project. So I think an application for hardship makes absolutely no sense, as simple as that.
Thank you very much, sir. Zuma Dog is our next speaker.
Yes, thank you. Yes, microphone, microphone. I can't hear myself. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say I'm reading from Council file CF061314. Says here, number five, "The City Council has not been provided with evidence that the applicant's proposed use is consistent with the state housing element law." So it says, it doesn't sound like there's hardship going on there. Right here, "applicant did not meet the requirements of a record owner at the time applicant was submitted," all right, a lot of other problems here, but let's talk about the ICO in the first place, which is, it's the interim control ordinance, and there's a reason why we have them. For the past few years, the city of Los Angeles has experienced widespread demolition of multifamily residential structures and the replacement of such structures by new condominiums. Consequences of these activities include loss of thousands of rental units regulated by the city's rent stabilization ordinance and the creation of an extreme shortage of affordable housing. Here's a very excellent ICO written by Senator Padilla, a very well-written document. "Condominium conversions not only create an inconvenience for affected tenants, but often present serious financial challenges and disruption of the family and community network. The impacts to the educational quality of children forced to change school in the middle of the school year, equally important social concern, y'all. Residents have an urgent need for protections from displacement until the appropriate course of action citywide is established and policies for smares, smooth transitions are implemented. Prohibit conversion of existing rental units into condominiums, yeet, yeet." Let's see what else it says here. So many other things. Rosendahl, thank you for yours, too. Says about ICOs, "Recent studies have shown Los Angeles to be the most economically segregated city in the United States. Wealthy neighborhoods are getting wealthier. Poorer communities are growing poorer. Such polarization tears at the fabric of our community and civic culture. It undermines our shared values." What I'm trying to say is, let's start using these ICOs. The councilmembers are putting them in for a reason. Let's stop this false construction boom that benefits special interests. Zuma Dog for City Council.
Bruce Kay is our next speaker. Bruce Kay?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Bruce Kay, and I've been a member of the United Neighbors for Responsible Development for more than three years. Today, I am sorry to report that our organization is in a state of crisis. Whether we are still the United Neighbors and just how each of us interprets the phrase "responsible development" is very much an open matter for debate. One thing I've learned in working with this group, and I'm sure it's a lesson all of you learned long ago, is that no good deed goes unpunished. If only you could please all of the people all of the time, that would be quite a trick. And I'm sure all of you would be lining up to learn the magic of that particular secret. Unfortunately, the cake you offer to one group is garbage to another. What are you going to do? You do exactly what you've done. You take all the interested parties, you put them in a room together, and you facilitate a compromise. And Councilman Weiss, I stand here today to tell you that with the guidance of your exceptionally able deputy Lisa Trifaletti, you have succeeded. Is everybody 100% happy? Obviously not. It is in the very nature of a compromise that neither side is completely satisfied. But I can say without any ambivalence whatsoever that the Q conditions that our group has crafted with planning and vested business interests is a groundbreaking urban planning achievement that your fellow councilmembers will be using in their districts as a template in the future. The project before you today very substantially complies with our draft Q conditions and in certain respects offers more innovation and creativity in its design than developers will be required to provide in the future. As such, I believe this project exemplifies responsible development, and I believe you have a very easy decision to reach today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. That is our last public speaker. I'd like to recognize Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I very much appreciate your listening to that public hearing. We, just so you know, we were required in the law to have a public hearing here in full council because I unfortunately, timing-wise, was on jury duty when the matter was heard in Plum, and so there was only one member at the Plum Committee when the matter was in Plum, so we needed to have a full public hearing again here in council. I do want to thank everyone who spoke. I want to particularly thank those who said kind words about Lisa Trifaletti, which are absolutely justified, particularly in this instance, because what Mr. Kay said is exactly right, and what Mr. Jacobberger said is exactly right. I initiated this ICO, I guess it's now two years ago, not to put a stop to development in this neighborhood in perpetuity of all shapes and sizes. That's not what an ICO is. You're not being honest with the public if you do it for that reason. And I did not state at the time, I did it for that reason. You can't do it for that reason. The only reason you can institute an ICO is to permit a more elaborate community developer city process to occur, which will craft a roadmap of conditions for the future. And that's what we've done. Indeed, it's taken longer than I would have hoped. That's why we had to renew and extend this ICO. But thanks to Ms. Trifaletti, thanks to her predecessor, Renee Scalachi, and thanks to Kevin Keller, we are coming up with a viable long-term plan for this neighborhood that not everyone will agree with and not everyone will appreciate, but that's the only way to legislate in this area. Because it's been a full, complete public hearing, for purposes of the record, I'd like to ask Mr. Keller, if you could come up for a minute and just fill in the issues from your perspective, take a minute, no more than a minute and a half or two minutes, and do that, and then we'll call the question. You can hold my time while he does it. Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. Kevin Keller, City Planning Department. Basically, as you've heard, the department is currently working with the community property and the owners, and the council has developed a permanent ordinance in this area and have developed a draft set of guidelines to regulate height, setback, building massing, building articulation, and other design features in the area. The property is owned R3-1. That would normally have a height limit of 45 feet. The proposal in front of the council today meets the density requirements, meets the FAR requirements, floor area ratio, meets the setback and yard requirements. The issue is really the height. And the proposed ordinance will carry over the height limit of 35 feet, but will allow up to 45 feet if certain performance standards are met. This project does meet those performance standards of additional stepbacks at the upper floor of 10 feet, 20 feet on the sides, as well as additional articulation and open-space massing along the front facade, so it is in substantial compliance with the pending draft ordinance, and we are having a planning department open house and hearing on November 13th, as has been mentioned before. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keller, I want to thank you and the Planning Department for everything you've done. It's been a very long process to come up with, and the process is still ongoing, to come up with permanent rules and guidelines for this type of development in this neighborhood. Now, I put the ICO in because this is a very special neighborhood. It consists of very special, low-slung, R1, you know, old, Spanish... It consists of very special, low-slung, R1, you know, old, Spanish, quaint, neighborhood-y types of homes, and I want to preserve that character in that neighborhood. But I never said that an ICO would prevent all further development on the R3 lots. You cannot do that. And I never said that I would prevent lot ties, because indeed, Mr. Keller, you correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know of any circumstance, absent a specific plan, where we can prevent lot ties.
That's correct.
So we cannot do that, and I would just say that since we've had this discussion here and it's taken longer than perhaps folks would have expected, we have to be very judicious when we use these ICOs in the city, and we have to be very clear and honest with neighborhoods when we do them. If we overpromise, then we will have people who are quite upset at the end of the process. My office never overpromised, and I'm sorry that people walk away feeling less than satisfied, but I'm very appreciative of the many folks who did come down, and I want to particularly thank Mr. Kay, Mr. Jacoberger, whose comments, I think, hit it right on the head. I'd ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. There's no other members wishing to be heard. Let's open the roll on this item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. We can go to Special One next. Ms. Perry has asked for that to go out of order. And we have two public speaker cards. Ms. Perry, do you want to take those first, or do you want to make your comments first?
Yeah, let the speakers go first, if that's okay.
Okay. All right, we've got Zuma Dog. Oh, sorry. And just before that, I want to recognize, for an introduction, Mr. Labange, and then we'll take the public comment on this card.
Hi, members. I just wanted to introduce Janelle Romero, who's the producer of a very special event. She's going to tell us about it. She missed our opening ceremonies here this morning, but they'll be great opening ceremonies next week. Janelle?
Hi, council. I would personally like to invite you to the first annual American Indian Heritage Month, taking place the whole month of November. I brought this to the mayor's attention and to the city in producing the first annual American Indian Heritage Month. We need your support. We need your help. We're supported by all local 19 tribes. We're supported by all 11 tribes in South Dakota. We're supported by the state Lieutenant Governor Bustamante. We're supported by the National American Indian Commissioners for the state of California. And I'm proud to say that the city of Los Angeles, home of the largest American Indian population, the entertainment capital of the universe, and the second-largest city in the country, that you are recognizing our Heritage Month. This is a first. This is a gift we're bringing, and I congratulate you, and I invite all of you. The website is www rednation.com, and you can get a list of all the events for November that we're organizing.
Thank you so much, members, that it's going to have their big opening ceremonies on the banks of the Los Angeles rivers in the north side of Griffith Park next week. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, for that introduction. I meant to say we needed to consider Special One first, so on the finding, Mr. City Attorney, would you please?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, and that's a motion by Councilmember Perry and seconded by Councilmember Smith.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Los Angeles Police Department has notified city officials that the trash buildup in Skid Row has reached critical levels and is creating a possible health problem. Immediate action is required to have the bureaus of sanitation and street services to report on its procedures and to possibly resolve trash pickup issues among city departments. Council must first make findings and approve them by 10 votes pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is now before us. Ms. Perry, we have one card. I just want to clarify, we have two cards, but I think, Mr. Dog, you had yours for Special Agenda Item Number One, not Special One, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Estella Lopez, I'd like to invite forward on Special One.
Thank you very much. I'm Estella Lopez, the Director of the Central City East Association. I'm here really to thank you. Thank you so much for taking this issue up today. When I appeared before you on Wednesday, I told you that the problem in the Central City East area with the uncollected and unswept trash had reached emergency levels, and it gets more dangerous every day. Just to put it in perspective, the Central City East Association manages two business improvement districts in the area. Every day, we pick up approximately seven tons of trash from our district. That alone is something that should be noted. But since the start of the Safer Cities Initiative, we have been picking up an average of 10 tons a day, and we're not even making a dent. That is why this issue is here before you. We need your help. I don't know what the reason is, but from the community standpoint, it appears as if not enough planning or insufficient resources were given to the public works personnel at the same time that the enforcement began under Safer Cities. There is a tremendous amount of trash being left behind by transients who are either arrested or who are voluntarily taking advantage of services and shelter. It is now a foot deep in front of some of our businesses. It is crawling with vermin. I had a business owner yesterday tell me that the gutter in front of his store is filled with human excrement. We need your help, and I so appreciate that you made time to take up this issue today. Thank you, council members.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lopez.
Can I talk to that area?
Not without filling out a card, not by just shouting from the public. Fill out a card.
Special, special.
Ms. Perry?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Please, could you fill out a card? We'll work you into it, but Ms. Perry's going to speak right now.
If I may, if I'd like to invite city staff to the table, Mr. Bill Robinson, Mr. Nazario Sosado, and Captain Jody Wakefield and Sergeant Shaw, if they're still here. Okay, great. And we rely very heavily on people out in the field, and I have to say, Mr. Rosen Dahl just asked me, you know, give me what's going on, and I have to say, it's overwhelming. An initial take on the situation is that we need more help, we need more people out there. It's overwhelming for street services, it's overwhelming for LAPD and the officers who are out there. I'd just like all of them to give us a synopsis of what they perceive as a situation out there now, since the implementation of Safer Cities, and Captain or Sergeant, maybe you could start.
Jody Wakefield, I'm the Central Patrol Captain, and with me I have my subject matter expert, Sergeant Tim Shaw, who works the east side detail, which are the officers that routinely clean up and deal with the homeless issues over on the east side of our division. Since Safer City Initiative has started, as I said, on Wednesday, the enforcement effort has been very productive, and we have seen a very big difference in the environment out there. However, we are having a difficult time with the trash issue and the cleanup part of our goal, which is to have a clean and safe community. And it's no fault of my officers or the actual people that are working street services, they are out there on a daily basis, working together in partnership. However, there is an issue with defining what is the gray area on what we will take, what is personal property versus an accumulation of unhealthy items such as mattresses with feces covered and torn, and also crates, also chairs, small refrigerators. And so we need a definition, because the street service workers really want to do their job, and we want to do our job. However, they feel at times that their hands are tied because they don't want to take a personal item of the homeless person. And so we need clarification and to remedy this immediately, because it is accumulating, as Estella Lopez mentioned, at a rapid rate, particularly between San Pedro Central and Fifth and Seventh. So we're here to try to come to an agreement on what we are able to take and let the investigator that's out there make those calls and not worry about whether he's going to be second-guessed or not. And that's exactly what's occurring out there.
Captain Wakefield, I don't know if you are aware, or Sergeant Shaw, has the department been given any direction from the Office of the City Attorney about what can and cannot be picked up?
We've been given very broad terms of what can and cannot be picked up. The basic guideline is, if they can pick it up and carry it by themselves, they can take it, and they can take several trips at moving their property. So if they can load three mattresses on their back and move it, they can keep it. The health issue is very concerning to all of us. As you guys probably are aware, we just had an article in LA Weekly concerning the staff infection out there. It's out there, and there are a lot of people untreated. I have a detective at home right now fighting for her health. It's very upsetting to all of us. It comes into our station because we deal with very unhealthy, filthy people, unfortunately, and, you know, we can't ignore it. And by allowing them to keep some of these possessions, such as clothing that is just covered with all kinds of bodily fluids, because they may want to wear that again, it's unhealthy for them. So that is a problem that we're dealing with, and the guidelines are too broad.
Thank you very much, Captain. Mr. Robertson, maybe you can help us out. Tell me current status, why can't the crew pick up items now?
The reality is, and I apologize to the council for the Board of Public Works isn't here, our department, the reality is, the city has been sued countless times for removing what has been deemed personal property by the homeless advocates or the individuals themselves. The problem was well-stated. It's a policy issue of identifying what is personal property, what is trash. We pick up everything that is identified as trash. When it gets in the gray area of being someone's personal property, we have been instructed not to remove that because that is personal property.
And from where did those instructions come?
Pardon me?
From where did those instructions come?
From council.
Okay, and do you have the...
From our attorney, city attorney.
Your city attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Are they written down?
What we're doing right now, we are a key member or a key partner in the Safer Cities Initiative. Wherever it's been successful throughout the city, we're in the background, we're the ones hauling away the trash, we're the ones working with PD and the city attorney's office to make it successful. We would like nothing better than to go through Skid Row and clean every single spot that's on the sidewalk. But there is an issue that needs to be addressed. We are working with the mayor's office, the city attorney's office, to have clear guidelines that tell us what is and what is not. Because the reality is, who is ever responsible for that policy, the city will be sued. At some point in time, we're going to be sued. And the reality is, Skid Row is cleaned more than any part of the city every single day. It gets a lot of attention, it gets a lot of resources.
So what instructions?
But we're hamstrung right now with that simple policy.
Help me out on the gray area. What instructions have you been given to date on how to handle the issue of the gray area? Does the crew defer to the supervisor when they're out in the field? You've got the posting, right?
Yes.
Posting ahead of time, and you've got the crews out there advising people before the truck gets there that the cleanup's about to take place. There is the storage facility now in the Skid Row area. I believe you photograph and then bag people's items, correct, under the previous protocols that have been in place from previous lawsuits?
We do not.
And then, so tell me, narrow it down for me, what else do you need in terms of clarification on the gray area?
I'll give you an example. Many times, we run across bedding, whether in a mattress is kind of outside, we see that, too, but I'm talking about somebody's blankets. If an individual is not physically there, and we can identify that somebody's got a pillow and a blanket there, it belongs to somebody. We have been cautioned by the city attorney's office that that is somebody's personal property, no matter how dirty it is, no matter how filthy it is. Somewhere, that person may have gone down the street or may not be there at the time that we're doing the actual cleaning. So the call comes, is it trash? Did somebody just discard it on the sidewalk? Or is that somebody's personal property that they temporarily walked away from and may be coming back to claim? Those are the types of issues that we need clarified and a policy set that either one entity in the city is going to take full responsibility for whether or not that item should be removed.
All right. Mr. Sosado, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Well, just, I just want to validate the efforts that we're doing in conjunction with LAPD. We have, this area of the city of Los Angeles, like Bill mentioned, receives a lot of cleaning. Every morning, we sweep the street between 2:00 a.m., the streets in downtown LA between 2:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. Then we do the same operation between the hours of 2:00 o'clock and 4:00 p.m. And we do a second cleaning right now. We try to clean as much as possible between 2:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. And most recently, as a request coming from Ms. Lopez, we're also supporting her efforts to clean the sidewalk. She has a crew as part of the bid, cleaning the sidewalk, washing the sidewalk, and we are partners, we're partnering with Ms. Lopez's staff to try to clean the area before the actual washing takes place. So yes, here's an issue on which we are doing a lot of cleaning, but also the other part of the imbalance is the prevention, stopping the trash from getting on the sidewalk. And those were the efforts also need to be placed on, how can we stop the trash from getting on the sidewalk? It's not just about cleaning, it's about also stopping the trash from getting there.
So if we may, just going back to Captain Wakefield and then to Mr. Robertson, what resources do you need? Obviously, you need a clarification on the guidelines with respect to what is personal property versus trash, that's one. And then in addition to that, Captain, and then Mr. Robertson, tell us what it is you think that you need so that we can, we're not going to get ahead of this issue, but at least stay even with the amount of trash on the street to be able to get it off.
Well, I'd first like to say that I am not disputing the fact that public works with us probably more than anywhere else in the city, but it's needed more than anywhere else in the city in Central, and we have a good partnership. I think what we absolutely have to have is this definition of personal property and be reasonable. Where else in the city would you allow these items to remain on the sidewalk day after day after day? Where else in the city would you allow mattresses and broken chairs and feces to accumulate anywhere else in the city? It wouldn't be allowed. So we are in a very difficult position here because we're very supportive and we like our partnership, and they're very frustrated, too, because they want to do the same job that we do, clean the streets of downtown. So we need definition on the personal property aspect of this. They have requested, street services, because we do meet, they have requested additional funding so that they can provide the staff that would be required, because we need it at nighttime, too. If we had nighttime services, we could stop and prevent some of the trash that accumulates by the mere presence. So increased staff is an absolute must, and just the, also making the business owners accountable for their trash that they throw out the front doors, particularly in Toy Town. And that is an education issue on a lot of it that we're working on as a law enforcement aspect, but the enhancement part of this unfortunately wasn't brought up to speed at the same time as the enforcement part. So we're catching up, and that's what's critical, is try, that stopgap in between the time that the enforcement effort is able to catch up with us.
Mr. Robertson, do you have anything, do you want to add in terms of resources you need to be able to close the gap on this?
Yes. As a matter of fact, and one of the new initiatives, and the Safer Cities has created another problem for us, is because as LAPD does their sweeps and they make arrests, they may not be making those arrests during the hours for acts of cleaning. And so if we don't have the resources there to respond to a secondary request at a specific site, that trash is going to accumulate until the next day when the forces come back on. So we have identified some resources. We're working with the mayor's office now to put that package together, along with the CAO, and we should have that forthcoming probably by the middle of next week.
Okay, maybe we need to make sure we get that expedited. I, thank you very much, and I wanted to highlight again that we have this article given to all the council members from the LA Weekly called "The Scourge of Skid Row", and it is about the antibiotic-resistant staff infection running rampant through Skid Row. And if you were wondering, it also has affected, severely affected, one of our own city employees, Detective Houck out of Central Division, and references one of our city attorneys who worked extensively in Skid Row. And it's not just Skid Row. Many times, you and I have both heard comments about encampments proliferating in the southern part of the city, and I can tell you firsthand that I did break up an encampment of an in... that I did break up an encampment of an individual who had gangrene for a week and cellulitis and MRSA. We took out 10 truckloads of his stuff and 75 more yards with a skip loader and had to bleach the entire alley. And when I asked him to go to the hospital, he said no, and I was concerned that he would die. So we waited until he relented. But as he left, he said, "I want you to save all my stuff." We couldn't because he was highly contagious, and he was clearly infected, and had to go ahead and cart it off because I couldn't subject the city employees who were there on overtime on a Saturday afternoon for three hours to that kind of risk. And he was not going to be able to keep 10 truckloads of stuff anywhere anyway, and he had gone to the hospital. But this is the reality of what we are dealing with. And, Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to, and I will try to get the city attorney back in here on Tuesday to talk to us about clarification on the guidelines. They should not just apply to Skid Row, but I think citywide, we're going to have to start clarification on these guidelines because we are having the same problem in the southern part of the city and possibly in other parts of the city as well with respect to encampments.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. We have two public speakers we'll take back, and then Mr. Rosendahl, Michael Hunt, and then Matt Dowd, and then we'll hear from Mr. Rosendahl after that.
I appreciate you coming up here and explaining to it. It's the same issues beginning to develop in Venice. But I might say, I was at the corner of Main and Third this morning coming to work, and there was a homeless man with his pants leg pulled up, and he had the sores on that the L.A. Weekly so graphically showed, and he was doctoring his own staff infection right there in front of my eyes this morning coming in. Question, anybody can answer this. Is furniture considered personal, or is that stuff you can pick up?
I can answer based off what I've been told by the city attorney for Public Works. Furniture is considered personal if they can pick it up by themselves and move it.
What about shopping carts?
Shopping carts are not personal items unless they are given out by a certain member in the community, and they are given, they're clearly identified as their property. So if they're not those shopping carts, then we take those into custody.
And milk crates the same way?
Milk crates the same way. That is property of others. It's not their personal property. So we confiscate that also and return it to the owner.
We certainly want the city attorney to come here and clarify it. It is a citywide issue. As the sweeps have been taking place in Skid Row, homeless people are moving to Venice. There was a sweep there last week. We're looking for some kind of a facility to put their belongings in within the neighborhood there. But on Third Street and Fourth Street, off of Rose Avenue, by the public storage area and into the neighborhoods behind, we're seeing more and more encampments every day. I was with five or six homeless the other day who claimed they came here because it was getting rather violent downtown, and of course, the pressure was getting greater. So it's a citywide issue. And of course, the big elephant in the room is the overall strategy of dealing with homelessness, which the city, the county, and the state, and the federal government obviously all need to be focused on. I'm pleased with how Gil Sadio has been working on. I'm pleased with Jan Perry and our ad hoc committee on homelessness, and I'm pleased that the county is working with us. Everybody seems to be in a positive spirit. The long-range solution is permanent housing with supportive services. The short-term solution is flushing more money into the providers out there right now that are doing an incredible job, be it the St. Joseph Center and a whole bunch of others in Venice or all the great groups downtown. But, Mr. President, we need this clarification. The city attorney's office should be coming in, giving us clear guidelines that we can use throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Hunt, if you'd like to give your comments?
Thank you again. Hey, Bill, I really appreciate you on this one. I, too, am homeless, and when I came down to the Central Division to try and find shelter or whatever for my items, I could not find it. I went directly into the station, asked direct questions to the officer. He couldn't even find a homeless shelter book. It is a big problem. I investigated myself from downtown to Venice, to Venice, to wherever was going on. It's a big problem. The staff infection is affection known to be in jail, and it's very contagious and very serious, like Ms. Perry said. They really need more hospital encampments down here, and they really need more shelters that are providing medical assistance to these people. And what I really found out to be true, that there is no real homeless shelter that are really taking these people in, and that's why the big problem out on the streets. I was down here on Sunday all night, and I just watched the problem. Well, yeah, you can clean up one area. By the time you get to the next area, they didn't pissed and did everything else. So it's still dirty again. Why? Because there's not enough shelters. I think that you guys ought to involve the homeless people in this cleanup and let them do it, and that would save you guys a lot of problems. The problem is that really, LAPD don't know how to handle the issue as far as talking to these people. I think that if you get them to work and do what they do, and let them clean up and be responsible for their own area, you might have a lot more cooperation. So it is a big problem. I experienced it. I've been down there. I've been to Venice. I've been to every homeless area. I think that all of you guys need to go down there and experience it, too.
Mr. Dowd is next.
Okay, thank you. I'm only going to take a minute, but I want you guys to listen to me because I think you're still running around in circles on this. We're worried about the trash instead of the people. Now, it's all very valid, the health concerns, but we need to go back to solid ground, and that's where the judge said, "You cannot arrest these people because they have nowhere else to go." So if you want to get rid of all the trash and get rid of the people off these streets, you provide a place for them to go, and then you know where all that stuff's going, and you get it controlled. Now, what you need is two places, though. You need one where there's zero tolerance for drugs or any criminal activity, and one where there's no police presence, because then all the drug people will go there, and you can get the women and children and people who want to get out of this hellhole. You get them away, and at least we can deal with them first. And as long as you know you've got somewhere for people to go, you don't have to arrest them, and you don't have their trash all over the city streets. It's really simple. Come and have a meeting with me. I'll tell you how to do it all.
Close our public comment. Ms. Perry?
Thank you. Mr. President, if you wouldn't mind, Sergeant Shaw had some additional things that he can add in about two minutes. If we could do that, please?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. One of the items I wanted to address is the people living out in the streets themselves. And with these encampments being built up, the message that was given to you, sir, and I'm hearing now, is as these items are being built up and these encampments are building, the people that are living out on the streets are more fearful, and they're moving off these streets. Because what is happening, you're having mattresses, furniture, cardboard, carpet rolls, padded rolls, pallets, things being built up. And besides this staff infection, the hazards we're seeing is, these are places to secrete weapons, drugs. This is where prostitution activity is going on. So where these encampments are going on, you're seeing a spike in crime. So the people that are living out on the streets trying to make it, they don't want to see these giant encampments built up. So again, if we can get clarification and allow the Public Works investigator to make the call on the street that, hey, this mattress, this furniture item, this pallet, this rug, it needs to go. I think that'll go on a long way in making our streets safer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, go ahead. Well, I was going to make a motion, and Mr. Rosendahl has agreed to second it, and this will be just a verbal motion. And I need a quick clarification. I know the city attorney for Public Works is out of town today, so it may be that we have to wait till next Tuesday. But emergency basis, what can be done between today and next week on this issue? An emergency clarification on the guidelines. What is the definition between personal items and trash? And what do you do with items that may put the individual, not only holding those items, but those picking it up, at risk because of the body fluids that are on or on those items, as well as vermin and other risky issues associated with picking those items up? And then how this policy is applied on a citywide basis? And ask for clarification on that as well.
Okay. I'd second that motion, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to comment?
Just for clarification, this motion was presented to me personally less than three hours ago, and requests that the Bureau of Sanitation and Bureau of Street Services report. Our office will be happy to report next Tuesday based on this motion.
Great.
Okay. We'll make sure that that gets included on next Tuesday's agenda. So we have now the item before us.
They'll figure it out.
Okay, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all very much for your time.
I guess I split mine.
Okay. We can now return to the regular agenda and take up items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 together. And Mr. Sacks, if you'd like to come forward on items 1 through 6 now?
Yes, thank you very much. Even on the important items, again, this is a voting situation. Nobody's in their seats. How can non-votes count?
Sir, if you've, I know in general public comment you brought that up, and item, Rule Number 48, which the city attorney will read to you, will answer that question. If you have comments on 1 through 6 on the substance of these matters, we'd like to hear that at this time. But general public comment seemed to be the appropriate point. We appreciate that you raised that, and we do have the answer. Mr. City Attorney, if you'll please read that to Mr. Sacks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Rule 48, every member present, when a question is put, shall vote for or against the same. Whether the roll call has been mechanically tabulated or oral, it shall be supplemented by the clerk by counting one "aye" vote for each member present who did not vote. I repeat, the clerk will be counting one "aye" vote for each member present who did not vote. The clerk shall announce the vote.
This is neither unusual for legislative bodies or corporate boards. That is something that's done all the time. But that is the answer. If you'd like to come to Rules and Elections Committee, or if you have ideas of how to change that, those are the council rules, sir, and that is the way it is. So I hope that answers your question.
Sir--
But if you have anything to say, items 1 through 6, that would be in order right now.
All I'm asking about, items 1 through 6 include a vote. I've been to county commissioner meetings--
Right, sir. That's a third warning on this. You're bringing up a different item than the substance of 1 through 6, so we'll give you one more warning. We'd love to hear your testimony on 1 through 6 and any of the items there, the substance.
There's nothing to say. I mean--
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your public comment.
Anytime a vote's not taken, commissioners will abstain, except in city council meetings.
Sir, some people don't like a quorum at 10, but that's the rules, the way that they are. So we appreciate your testimony, and I hope that answers your question as fully as possible. We will now open the roll on items 1 through 6, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 11, and that was called "Special for Cards from the Public."
Okay, Zuma Dog is our first speaker.
Eric, I had one card in for special one. Are you going to be putting that up there? I don't see it up there.
We're right now on this item, sir.
No, but are you going to--
We have not voted on that yet.
Okay, it's going to go back up there. Okay, I'd just like to say, this is to briefly, this is to hold the city council meeting in the harbor area. I say we got to keep them here. I can't make it to harbor area, and that's when all the agenda items are going to get jammed through that I want to talk about. So, you know, City Hall is here. It's consistent. We have to keep it here. The MacArthur Park thing was fun one time, but, excuse me? Yeah, Candy will pick me up, but, you know, that's not good enough. Too much travel time. So I'd just like to say, please, don't do this. It's way too far. This is where City Hall is. This is where all the downtown heart of it is. Let's keep the meetings here, because the day I don't show up, that's when all insanity breaks loose, and you jam through all these things on the agenda steamrolling, knowing because Zuma Dog can't make it, y'all. And I represent the people, so keep the people's representation right here at City Hall, Spring Street. Come on down, Zuma Dog.
Arnold Sacks is our next speaker.
What I'd like to know, since this council meeting will be held in the harbor meeting, harbor area, will the voting laws, voting, the rules for voting, hold there? Because I've been told that you have these voting rules only in city council chambers. And since it'll be outside of city council chambers, will the voting rules apply?
Any other public comments, sir? We'd be happy to have somebody talk to you about all the rules after this, if you'd like to go through them. Our rules apply no matter where we are, sir. But we are not here, we can't, under the Brown Act, do a long question and answer, but we appreciate your public comment. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this one. I'm going to go against ZD, because I want to actually see these meetings go to all the districts, including CD 11, because I know there's a lot of people out there who want to address the council as well, and they don't have the means or the resources to get to City Hall. So I think it's imperative that we have these meetings out in the districts. I know Janice has been hustling this one through for a little while, and I use that word advisedly. I know she's not a hustle, but I know we've been trying to get these through. The ITA, they do great work. Channel 35, I just wish I could get Dave Brown to give me a close-up, though. I dress up and everything for presentation day, and we can't even get a close-up on Channel 35. So that's my beef with the ITA. But get out there into the harbor area, and while you're out there on the road--
Mr. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
Let's see. I, too, support going out to San Pedro. I think it's a beautiful city. I think that we should go to every city. I think every district should be put in their bid in as far as going to south-central L.A. I once attended a meeting at the Police Commission on Figueroa Street with Bernard Parks. I think it was Jan Perry, which turned out to be really good. I think more support in different communities, bring the meeting to the communities, and let's hear what the people really have to say. I am in support of Jan Hahn on this issue. I'd just like to know, where would the meeting be held at at this time, Mr. Deion O'Connor, in San Pedro? Is that a viable question? I mean, San Pedro's a big place. I mean, are we holding in the city of a hotel or whatever? All that's not available?
Mr. City Attorney?
That information? Mr. City Attorney? Can we know location? I mean, is that a fair question? The port, the actual port?
This isn't a question and answer period.
Well, I mean, if I'm supporting something, I would, I would like to know where it was at, Mr. Deion O'Connor. I mean, that's part of the initiative. It's going to be in the harbor. I mean, at least, at least address where it's going to be at. Like, if it's going to be in San Fernando Valley, if it's going to be at MacArthur Park. I mean, that's fair.
I think, Mr. Hunt, I think the, that it may, primarily has been at the port when it's been held there before, but there will be proper notice ahead of time to let people know. But it will be in the harbor area. Sometimes it's been in Wilmington and sometimes San Pedro.
Okay. And what month would this take place?
I know we're take, I think at the end, November 17th, it's going to be in the harbor.
Okay.
And the others will be determined--
Okay, thank you. Now, that's a little bit more information. That's not, that's not--
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. I'd like to call on Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President and colleagues. I want to thank Ms. Hahn for putting this forward. I know Mr. Smith and Mr. Cardenas and our other Valley members really made sure that we continue the tradition Mr. Padilla started when he was president, where we first used to go into each one of our council districts. Now we have a steady stream of meetings, one morning each month, the first Friday of the month, out in Van Eyse, and another area now, which will have actually three meetings. It's in the committee report, so online or any of the places here. You can read the committee report. It has all of that. And anybody who's interested in general in public comment can always read our committee reports ahead of time, and most of your questions are usually answered in there. It'd have one meeting that's going to be down the harbor. There's going to be one in Wilmington, and one in the third location, the harbor gateway, to be disclosed. But the idea behind this is, again, we have such a spread-out city and such a place where it's difficult to get government to actually be there and feel like it's a part of the community. Ms. Hahn is leading the way in her district in making sure, in the southernmost reaches of the city, that we will be able to do this. This is something that we will do in each year, these three meetings that will be in the south section in those three different neighborhoods. And again, colleagues, as president and also the chair of the Rules and Elections Committee, this is something Mr. Reyes has done, and any of you are welcome to do in your respective communities. It's a way, we know that there's a slight additional cost, but it's a small price to pay for making sure that people feel like democracy is right where they are, and their city council is in their neighborhood. So I urge, and I vote for this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, the item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item number 12, called "Special for Cards from the Public."
We have three cards, Zuma Dog, Matt Dowd, and Mr. Hunt. We have three cards, Zuma Dog, Matt Dowd, and Mr. Hunt.
Yes, this, hello, check microphone, one, two. Communication from the Chair. This is to accurately reflect the office staffing structure as well as roles of individual members. It's in the mayor's office relative to an amendment to the Conflict of Interest Code for the Office of the Mayor. And, let's see, speaking of this conflict, we had the President of the Port of Los Angeles Harbor Commission, he's on that fun little trip in China with Mayor Antonio right now. However, there was like a period two days ago where he was completely unaccounted for. He missed his airplane to the next stop in China, and nobody knew, his cell battery must have been dead. And people are saying, well, gee, what's he going off random on a trip? He's in the middle of a trip with Asia. Y'all probably don't even know this, but the Harbor President was AWOL on this trip to Asia. That presents a conflict of interest, because maybe it's possible he had his own interests, his own separate business interests, that he was investigating in that time. He was AWOL, and possibly some of those interests coincide with his position as the Port President as well. So you've got the co-mingling, just like you guys like to co-mingle items on one ballot measure. Sometimes you have a personnel that's co-mingling his own personal interests with the ones he's representing as the President of the Port, and that's why he was AWOL. So that's a conflict of interest.
Mr. Dowd.
Check, two, one, two. Thank you, yes. Ethics codes, one of my favorite topics. And this one, this one's, I did mention once before about ethics, and they're all about knowing right from wrong, or in the mayor's case, right from Wong. Okay? Now, we saw Mickey Mouse here today. He said Disneyland was the happiest place in the world, but I think we need to get Mr. Wong in here and tell us where the happiest ending in the world is, so we can all go down and get some of that.
Mr. Hunt. Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This also came through committee, and colleagues, this fulfills a move and a promise that the mayor made about Conflict of Interest Code and strengthens the ethics laws here in the city, part of some of the effort that we've seen this council do as well, to ensure that folks who are acting in a public capacity also have to have a code of conduct which they abide by. I know that Mr. Parks, as well, has been working on this to make sure that we have that, and we have that now clarified for commissioners as well. There's a code of conduct for all public officials, both the elected and appointed ones. But this also then says specifically which staff members in the mayor's office will also fall into a stricter code of conduct in ensuring that the public trust is ensured. So I want to thank the mayor for putting this forward, for continuing his pledge to make sure that we have that, those ethics reforms. I think what we've read in the papers recently shows some of the problems of some of the loopholes we have. For instance, right now, that commissioners can be lobbyists. There are obviously options to close that loophole on the ballot in the next month, but here, we're able to do something at least on the temporary basis, and hopefully it'll stay there for all future mayoral administrations as well, and no council will ever repeal this, to make sure we have the strict code of conduct. So again, I ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Item's been approved. Next item?
Item number 13, called "Special for Cards from the Public."
Zuma Dog, followed by Arnold Sacks. It's item 13.
Yes, this is communication from the Chair, Rules and Ethics Committee, for requesting support from the County Registrar Recorder for the 2007 municipal election, one of them March 6th, when Zuma Dog will be running for city council. So I have a vested interest in this one, because we definitely have election frauds going on, and so I think we need to have this related support with, you know, once again, get this added support down here, because we got to look for election fraud, because people are walking into the booths, they don't check IDs. You can look at the log yourself and see who hasn't showed up yet, and since about, you got about a 98% no-turnout rate, so it's very easy to just pick somebody's name, and chances are, they're not even going to come by. So we have a lot of election fraud going on. Let's see, yeah, you got these house parties where everybody bands together, they take the bus caravans down to the polls, everybody walks into the polls, they don't check IDs, people are voting under names that ain't even them, there's no way to tell. And so basically, yeah, I support having this added money for the, I can see Deion, okay, y'all. I'm trying to stay on topic, y'all, I support this, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks. No, okay. Mr. Sacks has indicated he does not want to speak. Madam Clerk, if you could, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Next item is item number 14, and that was called "Special for Cards from the Public."
Yes, Candido Mares, please.
I would ask that the staff come up and report first, if possible.
There is no staff here on that item right now.
Yes, there's staff here.
I think none of the council members have asked for a report. Is there a council member that would like to ask the staff to come up?
May I have my notes, please? Thank you, Madam President, council members. This has to do with a contract with DWP to increase it from 1.5 million to 5.6 million. Again, this is one of those contracts that's being rushed through, it's not being scrutinized. Again, the ratepayers are going to pay. Again, the company that's getting the increase is a good company, we're not saying that, but again, there's supposed to be rules and regulations. I just had two contracts taken away from me that equaled $3,000. $3,000!
Excuse me, Madam President, this item has to do with a contract involving uniform rental and laundering services?
That is correct. That's what we're talking about, contracts, sir. Again...
This, this contract.
Correct. You mean I can't speak anything else? Clarification? I mean, we're talking about contracts.
The agenda description is about this contract.
Again, I am limited. Let me just say this. I've been before this council, when I was appointed by this council to sit on a committee, and a lot of things took place. The bidding net was discontinued, we saved millions of dollars there. The missed discounts were captured, we're saving millions of dollars there. The janitorial contract, where a lot of workers came here, you remember that, Mr. Smith? A lot of workers came here and complained. That was, that was canceled. And now the commissioners have done investigations, and hopefully those issues will never happen again. Those products will never be brought in. But the retaliation against me continues. So on December 1st, if it continues, I will wear my best black suit, and I will sit here for the rest of my days, and I will go on a hunger strike, because I will not sit by. Mr. Cardenas, you said at that meeting, you said that the Department of Water and Power had blown it, and it was about integrity, that the integrity of a small business owner was just as important as a large company. This is about integrity, Madam President, council members. It's about integrity, and I will be here December 1st until the day in my black suit. And I make that as a promise.
Thank you, Mr. Mares. Colleagues, seeing no one on the queue, Madam Clerk, there is no card, Mr. Dowd, and I believe you've reached your six minutes. The city attorney said to me. I'm sorry, we don't have a card for, I'm sorry? You accepted a card from him? It's six minutes. He can confirm that. The President, who has been counting as well, the city attorney said you have had your six minutes. The city attorney and Mr. Garcetti, who was chairing the meeting during the time in which your last remarks.
Six minutes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And additionally, additionally, Mr. Dowd, we do not have a card from you. So, Madam Clerk, open the roll.
He can be determined out of order.
Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number one from the special meeting, and that was called "Special for Cards from the Public."
Yes. Mr. Zuma Dog, on item number one.
Okay, this is my final speech for today. This is very important, because according to Zuma Dog's inside sources, we need to put all these track maps on hold, because it says right here in the track map, "Adopt City Engineer Report," but there aren't going to be no engineer reports if the EAA strikes at any time.
Excuse me, Madam President, he's exceeded his six minutes.
No, I have not. No, I have not.
I'm following the direction of the city attorney, who's indicated, okay. I will ask the city, again, the city attorney is advising us at this moment, so Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Where, Mr. Zuma Dog, if you could hold on one minute, the city attorney and the President are discussing it. I was not present at the Chair when that occurred. We have one, one minute.
Madam President, that needs to be reconsidered.
Yes.
The vote was already taken.
Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yeah, look, they got to follow the Brown Act on the recontinuance, y'all. According to Zuma Dog's inside sources, you got to put these track maps on hold, because you're not giving the EAA the money they need, and they're going to be striking, so you won't have the engineer report, you're not going to be able to have the track map make either, because the EAA also makes the track map.
He appears to be off of the agenda description.
No, no, this is for a final approval of a track map.
No, special one is, that's before us, special, no, the special one, what they indicated was on the homeless issue. Is that correct, Mr.? Final track map, please, go ahead.
Okay, can I have my minute back now? We got to start from the top. Okay, so this is about track maps. We're not going to have any, this is a half a million dollar track map, but the EAA makes the track map, and you're not paying them, they're going to go on strike. Then you have a city engineer report. Well, you're not going to be able to have that when the EAA's on strike, okay? These come through the agendas weekly. So I say you have to put this half million dollar track map on hold, plus the ICOs. All the ICOs say put a stoppage on the track maps, because that's the first thing for condo conversions. So I got all these ICOs, too, and I got the Superior Court. That's it, bro. Don't vote, no, I got to vote.
Thank you. Candido Mares? Candido?
Thank you, Madam President, for, since 1991, I've been here, and I hope that my integrity stands for itself. But I have to read this. "In my struggle to come to my understanding of my relationship with God, I finally had to realize that God creates nature."
This is off-topic on the track map matter.
Madam President! Please, I mean...
Mr. Mares, I've just, I think he's warning you that it has to be on the topic that's before us.
It is about the, please. Mr. Rosenthal, I've carried this since you spoke, that I'd like to return that to you. Thank you, sir.
Seeing no other public comment cards, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
The excused is on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, November 1st, to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Labonge requests to be excused for city business Friday, November 3rd. A motion is required.
Mr. Labonge moves. Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Wednesday, October 25th, to leave at 11:15 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Wesson moves. Mr. Rosenthal seconds.
And Councilmember Zion requests to be excused Wednesday, November 15th. For city business, a motion is required.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Rosenthal seconds.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have announcements, colleagues? Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I ran into Dale Cochran yesterday on Largemont Village, and today is Johnny Cochran Sr.'s birthday, 90 years old, so I want to do a shout-out. He lives in, with Dale, in Los Feliz there, so happy birthday to Johnny Cochran Sr., the father of the late, great Johnny Cochran Jr., who would be two years past come this spring.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Rosenthal.
Annual Village Fair, Pacific Palisades, will be this Sunday from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. If you haven't been there, it's a village, and it's a positive experience, and there'll be music, rides, game booths, food, and family, too. So we encourage people to go to the Palisades this Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Oh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. My office, in conjunction with the City Attorney Dispute Resolution Program and the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families, invite the public to a Day of Dialogue event regarding a Safe Park for Everyone at Ross Snyder Recreation Center. We will have food and childcare. If you are interested in attending, we do need your reservation to make sure we have enough supplies and food. 323-846-2651. I also received an email while I was down here regarding an individual who has accosted a six-year-old girl today in the district and took pictures of her before running off. He approached a young child at 7:30 AM near a school in the 800 block of East 49th Street, and he asked the child to lift her clothing. He took photographs of her and laid on top of her. This is a composite drawing of the suspect, and I have given one over to our technical people. I don't know if they can show it on camera or not.
They are showing it on camera, as we're speaking.
Okay, great. Five incidents have taken place already, and while there has been no skin-to-skin contact that the officers have discerned yet, he has attempted to lead children away from the school in order to accost them. So I'm pleased that they emailed me this information, and want to put it out on the airwaves, so people can be alerted as soon as possible. Thank you.
And they should call the LAPD.
Call LAPD, yes. And they can call and ask for Lieutenant Paul Vernon, LAPD, Newton Division.
Thank you. Mr. Parks and Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The 8th District has three major events tomorrow. The 10th Annual KTLA Kids' Day in LA Festival will be at Epic Center, 3980 South Menlo. Admissions free. We'd encourage the public to come out and have a great time. They expect over 10,000 children. Also, tomorrow, we'll have the Taste of Soul on Crenshaw Street scene that will go from King Boulevard to Coliseum. It starts at 10:00 AM, goes to 6:00 PM. There'll be live entertainment, and a number of street vendors and businesses will take part, so we encourage everyone to come there. And then the first event of the Reclaiming Western Coalition, a number of community groups are coming together at 39th and Western to do a community cleanup. It starts at 8:30 in the morning on Saturday, so encourage the public to participate.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Tomorrow afternoon and noon, the famous Munch Box out in Chatsworth will be receiving a city plaque as a cultural heritage monument. They're going to have hamburgers and hot dogs and cokes at the 1950 prices. It's kind of a greasy burger place, and it's just kind of famous in the Northwest Valley, where they're going to be getting their cultural heritage plaque in 50 years of business. So anyone who wants to come out at noon can come out. And then tonight, in the Northridge area, supporters of law enforcement in Devinger group called Solid has an annual fundraiser for the police department. Thousands of people come to this. It's a spaghetti feast, but it's not cops making spaghetti, it's all the Italian restaurants it's all the Italian restaurants in the Northwest Valley who bring their specialties, and for four bucks, you get to eat all the specialties at all these Italian restaurants. It's a great deal for four bucks, 5:00, 8:00 o'clock at the St. Nicholas Greek Church on Balboa and Plummer.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, the 21st, we have from 10 to 1 o'clock, a health and safety fair at the Japanese Gardens, which is off the corner of Victory on Woodley in the Sepulveda Basin. And it's a health and safety fair, many, many free opportunities to get your blood pressure checked and things of that nature. We'll be giving out free safety kits, et cetera. So tomorrow, Saturday, from 10 o'clock on, at the Japanese Gardens, which is on Woodley, right off of Victory in the San Fernando Valley.
Mr. Labange.
And thank you. And also, the Los Angeles Police Department Mounted Unit, Metropolitan Mounted Unit, located on Regaldi Street in the 4th District, right next to the 13th District. Atwater Village has their open house. It's a great day to bring your children, come see these beautiful horses and meet the fine officers, the men and women of the LAPD. Easiest directions off of Los Feliz Boulevard, north on Brunswick, to Regaldi, straight into the Metropolitan Mounted Unit, from 10 to 4, a great open house at the Amundson Equestrian Center, LAPD, Atwater Village.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And I'd like to, in the Council District 2 and Council District 5, this weekend is the Sherman Oaks Fair on Ventura Boulevard. This is the first time it will be both Saturday and Sunday. On Sunday, there'll also be the Valley Glen picnic, as well as our Laurel Plaza picnic on Sunday. So this is a great weekend to enjoy the good weather and be out there and support organizations in our community. We have adjourning motions today. If everyone would please rise. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. It's with great sadness that I announce that Anthony Alarcon, a Navy, World War II veteran, and the father of former LA City Councilman and current Senator Richard Alarcon, has passed away. He passed away peacefully at his home in North Hollywood on October 16th, 2006. Guadalupe Alarcon and family members were at his bedside. He died from complications of Alzheimer's disease. Anthony Alarcon was a proud veteran of World War II, who served as a Navy gunner on a merchant marine ship from 1942 to 1945. His service took him throughout the world, including Asia, Europe, and Australia. Anthony Alarcon moved to North Hollywood, California in 1923. He attended Roscoe Elementary School in Sun Valley and North Hollywood High School. Alarcon was very proud of his San Fernando Valley roots and often reminisced about Orcasitas, the community barrio where he was raised and ultimately passed away. He learned his custom upholstery trade, built two homes, and raised five children, and owned and operated his business in Sun Valley for 45 years. It was at his shop that friends and family, and even local kids, could stop by and know that Tony would always stop what he was doing and talk to them. A few months ago, he said, "I didn't do great, but I did okay for a guy who didn't have a lot to start with." He will be sorely missed by all who knew him and loved him as he touched so many lives. His wife of 38 years, Guadalupe Alarcon, is, he's survived by her, and Anthony Alarcon is survived by four children. His son, Senator Richard Alarcon, Evelina, Cynthia, David, and Terry Alarcon, and seven grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, and his 104-year-old aunt, Remedios Alarcon Bueno. Services will begin on Sunday, October 22nd, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at the Rosary, which is at 5:00 PM at Mission Hills Catholic Mortuary in Mission Hills. The funeral mass will be on Monday, October 23rd, at noon at the Mission San Fernando Rey de España in Mission Hills. Interment immediately following at the San Fernando Mission Cemetery in Mission Hills. In lieu of flowers, the family requests that donations be made in the name of Anthony Alarcon to any one of the following organizations. Veterans Advisory Board, a nonprofit organization providing assistance to veterans and their dependents. The Alzheimer's Association of the San Fernando Valley in care of CSUN, and the Young Senators Program. And the information has been passed out to each one of the council members, all members.
All members, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Two adjourning motions today, colleagues, first for Angela Boden, who passed away on Sunday, October 15th, 2006, at the young age of 30 years. She's probably a familiar person to many people in these chambers. Since 2004, she had been the lead researcher for strategic concepts in organizing and policy education, or SCOPE, where she worked tirelessly to connect low-income communities of color to information needed to develop effective proactive workforce and economic development issues. Her work ranged from research and analysis on green economic development, most recently on the Apollo Alliance Initiative that I know Mr. Wesson has been a big part of, to statewide tax and fiscal policies. Some friends of hers from SCOPE are here today, including Alejandro Marroquín from my office. Before joining SCOPE, Angela worked at the Center for the Study of Genders and Sexualities at the California State University of Los Angeles while completing her graduate work in economics. Despite becoming pregnant at the age of 14 and dropping out of high school, she succeeded in earning a BA in Deaf Studies slash Linguistics from CSUN, and an MA in Economics and Statistics from California State University of Los Angeles. She also served on the board of the Center for the Study of Genders and Sexualities. And most importantly, Angela was the proud mother and best friend of her amazing 15-year-old daughter. For those of us who had a chance to know her and to work with her, her impact on this city is great and grand, and she was taken from all of us here way too early. And all of her friends and her family, we're with them, in our sympathies and embracing them from this point forward. Angela Boden, rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Second adjourning motion is for Petty Officer 2nd Class Michael Mansour. He's a member of the Navy SEALs who sacrificed his life and died on September 29th. He had been with a group of Navy SEALs and had gone to a sniper hideout where there was a group of Iraqi insurgents who threw a grenade towards all of the men. And literally, Petty Officer Michael Mansour, he'd been near the only door to the rooftop structure, and it hit him in the chest and bounced to the floor. And he looked down, and he threw himself on that grenade, knowing that his fellow men were behind him, in order to take the blow of that and save their lives. Quote, "He never took his eye off the grenade, his only movement was down toward it," said a 20-year-old lieutenant who was with him. "He undoubtedly saved mine and the other SEALs' lives, and we owe him." He was a 25-year-old gunner, he died in Ramadi. He's the second SEAL to die, and he was based out of Coronado here, described by his peers as a fun-loving guy and a Garden Grove, California native as well. He had already demonstrated considerable courage under fire, previously being awarded the Silver Star. And so far, he's the second Navy SEAL to die in Iraq. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Christopher Glenn, that great CBS correspondent for over 35 years, anchored numerous programs and broadcasts, including the 1986 coverage of the space shuttle Challenger explosion. He died at the age of 68 of liver cancer in his home state of Connecticut. Mr. Glenn was most recently the anchor of CBS flagship newscast, The World News Roundup, the longest-running news program in broadcasting. And once said he did about everything there is to do, from producing to writing to reporting in the field and anchoring in radio. Glenn retired in February after 50 years in television and radio, and is said to be inducted to the Radio Hall of Fame next month. He's survived by his wife Diane, daughters Rebecca and Lindsay, and his sister Patricia Rooney. Also, members, and I like all members on both of these, that we adjourn in memory of Grace Quinn. And Grace Quinn is a great woman who you may know as the mother of Tom Quinn, the head of City News Service, the wife of the late, great Joe Quinn, who was a great deputy mayor for Sam Muorty. Ms. Quinn was devoted to more two decades of providing low-cost legal health service to low-income clients, passed away with congestive heart failure at Cedar Sinai Medical Center. She was 91 years old. Born Grace Cooper in Winnipeg, Canada, Quinn moved to Los Angeles with her family as a young child. She graduated from Roosevelt High School during the Depression and found a job as a registrar of the dean at Pacific Coast University of Law School in Long Beach, which allowed her in that job to attend law school at night for free. She passed the bar exam in 1937 and worked in the US Attorney's Office for several years. She married local journalist Joseph Quinn, who later served, as I mentioned, with Mayor Sam Muorty as one of his deputy mayors. Quinn also worked with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles in the 50s and 60s, and when federal funding for family services was reduced, she joined Ethel Levitt to create the Levitt and Quinn Family Law Center in 1981. The center was located on Sunset Boulevard in Silver Lake for many years, and I know when I worked for John, I helped a few times on some issues they had in the community in their efforts there. Neither Quinn nor Levitt ever took salaries, they did it out of straight devotion. She was a very, very special person. She survived by her son, Tom, and Bob, stepson Joseph Quinn, 10 grandchildren, 13 great-grandchildren. The family requests that donations be made to the Quinn name to the Levitt and Quinn Family Law Center at 1557 Beverly Boulevard, Los Angeles, California 90026. I just wanted to mention, that's a, that's a great woman of Los Angeles who had a great husband and a great family, and her sons. I know Tom Quinn was a very close political associate with Jerry Brown when he was governor, when he left City News Service, running City News. But Grace, doing what she did, you know, some people just retire, but she went out and went and helped people. But a very, very special person that we adjourn in her memory. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Della Clark Allen, passed away on October 15th. She was born May 27th, 1909, in Carlton, Alabama. She's a very prominent citizen in Baldwin Hills View Park community, where she devoted much of her time for caring for the elderly, the sick, the disabled, until her death on October 15th at the age of 97. Her funeral service is to be held at Manchester Chapel of the Inglewood Cemetery tomorrow. And also, I'd ask that for all members that we adjourn in memory of Emily J. Perez, born in Heidelberg, Germany. She attended and graduated in high school in Maryland. She distinguished herself by becoming a wing commander in a junior ROTC. While at high school, she worked with the district's Peace Baptist Church where she started HIV/AIDS ministry. After graduating from high school, she attended the US Military Academy at West Point. She was an exemplary student and a talented track athlete. She had a number of achievements, but one that became very newsworthy, she was the first female minority command sergeant in the history of the United States Military Academy at West Point. She graduated the top 10 of her class as a command sergeant major. Following graduation, she was commissioned to a second lieutenant. She was killed on September 12th when a makeshift bomb exploded near Humvee during operations in Baghdad.
Yes, Ms. Perry would like to second that. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll. This meeting's now adjourned. Thank you.[1765.62]